You can get ready now.
Good evening. My name is Delegate Stephanie Smith, and I am Chair of the Baltimore City Delegation. Thank you for joining us for our second annual issues and priorities hearing. This is an important opportunity for members of our delegation, which is 16 strong, to hear from as many people as possible across our great city, from our citywide officials all the way to our neighbors across the city about what we should be thinking about and what we should be prioritizing in terms of policy during the General Assembly session in 2022. As many of you know, this is a very important year for the future of the city. The 2020 census has given us some sobering reminders about where there's work to be done as we've seen a decline in our population. There's also been work afoot around how we can address issues of public safety. The pandemic has shown the vulnerabilities and opportunities around addressing issues of food justice and access. And there's many, many, many more issues that we know we'll be hearing from all of you about. But before we hear from our citywide officials, I do want to give an update for all that are listening about some ways the House delegation will be reorganizing itself moving forward. As many people know, the House delegation has generally had three subcommittees, and they've focused on education, they've focused on public safety, and they've also focused on alcohol legislation because this is something that must be initiated at the state level. But because of the myriad challenges we've faced as a city, and as a city where roughly 30% of all households do not have regular access to a vehicle, and thus are transit-dependent, it's really important for us as a state delegation to put more focus and more leadership around how to shore up transit resources for our city, but also for our region. So I'm excited to announce that we will have a newly established Transit Subcommittee of the Baltimore City Delegation. And you know, some of the reasons why I think this is critically important at this moment in time is that, to date, the Greater Baltimore region has experienced consistent underinvestment from the state in its transit infrastructure. And this, under investment, it has had multi-generational adverse impacts. It adversely impacted social mobility, economic growth, and regional cohesion. So it's really important for our state delegation to leverage the momentum around federal support and commitment to transit funding, and also echoing the commitment of our federal leaders. It's incumbent upon state and local officials to leverage this moment to really provide transformational investments in the Greater Baltimore region's transit ecosystem. It's something that is going to be a pillar, but not the total way that we can address population loss, but it's significant. Many of the cities that have similar demographic realities and age to Baltimore City have seen their cities grow at the same time we've seen our city decline. And enhancing mobility not only benefits the residents that are already here, it also becomes attractive to those who want city life, but want to be free of having to use a car to get to all of the things they need and want to experience. So I'm super excited to announce that this Transit Caucus will be focused on three broad buckets, but I would be remiss if I didn't note that specifically our region has been reeling, quite frankly, from the Hogan administration's decision to stop the east-west connection proposed in the red line. But it's important that everyone hearing this message know that the red line is but a component of what needs to be built out for our region, something robust, interconnected, and dynamic. So this subcommittee will be charged with assessing how state resources and agencies can provide adequate maintenance and repair to our existing transit services, expanding service access, and also how we can improve connectivity across our transit infrastructure. So I'm pleased to announce that the leadership of this subcommittee will include Delegate Sandy Rosenberg as co-chair, District 41; Delegate Tony Bridges, District 41 as well, and also First Vice of the Baltimore City House delegation. And then joining us from District 43 would be Delegate Regina T. Boyce from District 46; Delegate Robin Lewis; and Delegate Brooklyer Mann. And lastly, from the 40th District, Delegate Melissa Wells. So I'm so excited to put this kind of, you know, mark for our delegation to show that Baltimore is committed to transit. Baltimore is committed to convening all stakeholders and ensuring that we can hold our state accountable to ensuring we get our fair share of resources related to transit, and also making the case for our next governor that they cannot neglect Baltimore's transit infrastructure anymore and think that the state delegation will have a position on it. So I am super thankful to my colleagues for answering the call and being willing to step up as if they don't have so many other things to do. But what I like about this bunch of colleagues is that this was something they did not hesitate to step up on because they're super personally committed, and they know that we can get a lot more done with a cohesive vision that we are sharing with the public together. So stay tuned to their own transit, you know, subcommittee-focused deliberations. And I just want to say thank you to my colleagues. So let me double-check who we have here. Oh, and also, before we get started, I just want to say that when I had the opportunity to step up and chair the delegation in January of 2020, it was before we knew that the pandemic was coming around the corner. There were so many things we kind of anticipated. But one of the things that I committed to my colleagues and committed to the public was that this delegation was going to be more accessible, more transparent than before. And so we began streaming our delegation meetings immediately. We didn't know that would become normal after the pandemic visited us, and other delegations did the same. But it was really important that our transparency and access not only be during the 90 days of session, it was important to all of us that we be more visible and accessible in the interim. So last year, we had our inaugural issues and priorities hearing, and we want to normalize this beyond my tenure because this is really about ensuring that Baltimore residents know who we are and can ensure that we know what matters to them. So at this time, I just want to make sure, ah, my mayor is here. Mayor Brandon M. Scott is with us. So you'll be hearing from a series of citywide leaders over the next 45 minutes or so. And we will begin with the mayor of Baltimore City, Mayor Scott, and without further ado.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I was in your neighborhood and not too far from your house today, over at the Yoke Center this evening. So thank you for having me in your neighborhood today and to all the members of the delegation for having me here this evening. I did not see her on the screen, but I know that we know that one of our delegation members, Delegate Maggie McIntosh, has told us that this will be the final ride, or the last ride, as they say. And at the appropriate time, I think it is a good way for us to acknowledge all the work that she's done for Baltimore City and how she has been a force for us in Annapolis for many, many months. And we know that she's not leaving us altogether. And we know that we have capable folks, as she said, that will be able to step right in as she has been working with the "new generation." But we know that she will be missed, and that we deeply love and appreciate her for her service. I'm really excited about the 2022 General Assembly session and the opportunities that we will have to continue to partner with each other, along with our other partners on here, the City Council President, the Comptroller, Madam State Attorney, to build upon previous success and tackle the pressing needs on behalf of our residents of Baltimore. And before I continue, I would just like to uplift the great successes in the legislative platform that I had, that we had together last year, that brought a path forward to local control of BPD after a 10-year battle sponsored by Delegate Wells ensured $12 million in permanent state funding for the Baltimore Regional Neighborhood Initiative Program Fund, Bernie, sponsored by you, Madam Chair. And we know that Delegate McIntosh worked some magic on making that permanent and for Visit Baltimore for you, Madam Chair, and the much-needed speed cameras to calm the traffic dangers on I-83, sponsored by Delegate Tony Bridges. We also were able to, last year together, secure $10 million in capital funding for the Perkins-Summitstead Old Town Redevelopment Project in East Baltimore, $10 million in infrastructure funding for our parks and our rec centers with an additional $3 million of funding matched for much-needed swimming pool renovations. Thank you to all of you for their work, especially Delegate McIntosh, to help us secure that. And of course, $1.5 million to help close the gap on the Greenway Trails project. And we achieved that together. As you said, it takes that coordination, collaboration, and trunks amongst us elected leaders before our residents today to ensure that our city has a strong and unified voice in Annapolis. I thank each and every one of you as delegates, our other elected officials, and residents that helped make those wins possible for Baltimore. And I remain thankful that the residents have entrusted me to speak for their needs as mayor, and I take that role very seriously. This year, quite frankly, we're looking forward to build upon those successes and focus attention on tackling the issues that have been plaguing our city and our residents. And public safety will continue to be my top priority. I want to thank this body for the historic police reform that was passed and much needed and deeply appreciated, but the work is not done. We know that guns remain a major problem in Baltimore City, and ghost guns in particularly are concerning and a growing issue. We have to strengthen regulation and enforcement over the flow of guns into our city and on ghost guns specifically, as they are driving violence in many neighborhoods. And we must, at the same time, have the ability to have our police commissioner rid the Department of folks whose actions are so egregious that we should not be keeping them on the force. It is not only a disservice, but a slap in the face to our city and our residents. We know that the reform bill made some good changes in this regard, but we have to go a little further into address that issue in its totality. And of course, our police department must have the resources, tool, and flexibility to continue to meet its federal consent decree requirements. We know the feds always set a high bar, and I expect them to meet that bar, even if it requires more stringent standards than what is set by the state. We'll also, this session, be focused on investment in our residents and our communities. It's also important to note that not all problems can or should be addressed by the police. Strengthening social and capital investment in our communities is crucial for addressing longstanding inequities in Baltimore. And with that understanding, we must fix blockages to information-saving and that stymie our ability to provide needed behavioral health services and to identify and really tackle problems that exist with our youth. We have to do that so that we can share those data, that data, so that we can make those things happen. We need to make sure, continuing, that our youth have safe and engaging places to play and congregate throughout parks and rec facilities. We have been able to take the city from having 40 rec centers that we now stand at 52, but we know we have a lot of work to do together to make sure that the facilities that we have are at the highest nature and in the best condition. We also need to make sure that we have the tools we need to properly address longstanding public health threats to our communities, like tobacco and ongoing problems obviously associated with the pandemic, alcohol, and things that have been plaguing Baltimore for a long time. And we need to also thank outside the box to create predictable and permanent funding methods and sources to tackle our aging infrastructure and meet our growing capital needs. Yes, as you all know, I was in Annapolis, I mean, not Annapolis, in DC yesterday for the bill signing, and we're very, very appreciative of what's to come. But we all, as you heard the chairwoman say, have still much more to do that we all can do. It will not be easy to take on these issues, and I will continue to work hard and advocate for the city with you and look forward to having a wonderful session with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. It's so, just, it's really exciting a time that we're in right now, and to have just the coordination between our city and our White House. Can't take that for granted. Thank you for your leadership on that front. And I also want to let folks who just tuned in know that Delegate Maggie McIntosh will be joining us a bit later, but I just want to just thank the mayor for beginning to give her her flowers while she can still smell them. We'll continue to pass them out through the remainder of the time we get to spend with her in the MGA. So thank you so much. At this time, I do also want to acknowledge that we do have a new delegate that is having her first public opportunity to engage with us today. And this is Delegate Roxanne Prettyman, District 44, I believe A., correct? That's right. So just wave to the people. Just want to make sure people get to see you. Fantastic. At this time, we will be hearing from the Council President of Baltimore City's City Council, Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I believe Nikki Thompson. We have a presentation, a couple slides.
A couple, correct? A couple?
Yeah, just a couple. I'm gonna stay with you for five minutes. Don't want to get in trouble.
I think I need to be given access or have the host switched over to share my screen?
We can arrange that. Okay. I see you're the host now.
Uh-oh, we can take over the delegation meeting? I'm joking. We're gonna get real quick. We're talking about your council being hard at work here. We all know the story about Baltimore City. How was the country's first racial zoning laws took place here? We can see the residual and byproducts of that today, particularly as it relates to the red line communities all the way up into the subprime mortgages in Black and Brown communities in East and West Baltimore. These communities have been disproportionately disinvested in for far too long, and the council's looking at ways of how we can kind of reinvigorate our communities and turn them back. Nikki, if you can move to the next slide. This is a quick map of all the vacancies throughout the city. As you can see, huge concentration. Again, when you overlay the red line map, there's a lot of consistencies. I'm pretty sure all of you have seen this map, as well as seen the red line map time and time again. But that's what the council is focused on, on this latest package. Next slide. So we announced a package yesterday called "How's Baltimore Legislative Package." And what it does is it brings back the $1 House program. The difference between now versus 50 years ago is this program is for legacy residents as well as city workers and folks in our city who are receiving housing choice vouchers. So it brings back the Dollar Home program, which provides, again, those legacy residents and folks with housing choice vouchers, as well as city employees, access to the city stockpile of non-performing assets. We estimate to be about 3,000 homes for them to have access to purchase those homes for a dollar and provide it with down payment assistance. In that legislation, we prioritize, from an EMI perspective, up to 80% EMI. But the high priority folks will be folks that are below 60% EMI. They will get first dibs at the properties and the houses. They get priority because they would be, you know, basically have the smallest amount of housing stock to choose from. You know, some of the houses would be too far out of reach or too far out of whack as relates to the construction costs for them to afford. So we want them to have access first. There's going to be certain ways for us to determine how someone is a legacy resident will work with the Housing Authority Housing Community Development here in the city of Baltimore to do so. Nikki, next slide. Also with that program, we're calling on for a $25,000 grant to fix up the homes. We know that many of the properties are going to take significant investment, and we know that this is kind of the gap between what the construction costs, as well as what the houses can appraise for. But it also provides $25,000 grants for folks still living in those communities. There's one thing to provide access and opportunity to homeownership for our residents. The folks have been literally carrying our city on their shoulders, dealing with crime, dealing with blight, and living in these communities. But it's also to the folks who, and they would ultimately be able to get the Dollar Homes, but it's also to the folks who are living there, right? I mean, we fixed up the 3,000 properties, but we also need to provide access for folks living in those communities so they can fix up their roofs, fix up their windows. We know that the biggest access to equity, biggest access to generational wealth, particularly for middle-class residents, is owning a home. The unique thing about Baltimore City is many of our residents are paying $1,200, $1,300, $1,400 every single month in rent, where if you looked at a mortgage, they would literally be paying $800, $900, saving hundreds of dollars every single month, while again, creating generational wealth for their families. Baltimore City market, when we were able to look at the numbers, about half of our residents pay a third in their monthly incomes in mortgage. Again, let's turn that into generational wealth. Let's put money back in folks' pockets so they can do the things like pay for schooling, for upward mobility, support their children's needs, and just run their households in a way that they have not done so in the past. The $25,000 grant program is sponsored by John Bullock on the council. And then lastly, we want to protect our seniors. We have a reverse mortgage protection program. Many of our seniors have been disproportionately targeted, again, in the same exact communities, and are losing their homes because of some of that targeting. So what we want to do is we develop a $5,000 grant to help them pay for things like insurance costs or taxes that they're late on, or any other issues. They would still have access to the $25,000 grant program as well. Again, when we talk about rebuilding our city, we talk about this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We're talking about investing in our city that we haven't seen for far too long. We think it's through the hottest commodity of the city of Baltimore, and that's our housing stock. You look to the east of the city. We have the water to the west. We have the mountains. We have a 45-minute train ride away from DC, a three-hour train ride from the Big Apple. We have the greatest hospital network and systems in the country. We have the history. We have the culture. We have the food. We have the sports teams. Baltimore City has it all. That's why our former president constantly talks about Baltimore in his way of dog-whistling, sorry to get political on this call, but he was telling folks that Baltimore City is a hot commodity from a real estate perspective, and we've seen that through the pandemic. We've seen tons and tons of properties being sold to out-of-state folks. We want the folks that, again, have been holding up our city for far too long to have access to the growth of the city of Baltimore. We were the first place in the country to really go down this path of redlining, and we should be the first place in this country to develop trailblazers and providing opportunities for our residents to, again, have access to it. Nikki, next slide. There will be some second phases associated with the How's Baltimore package that will be connected with the state delegation in hopes that we can look at targeted programs associated with enabling tax credits and tax incentives for the residents of Baltimore, particularly for the Dollar House program. So you'll be hearing from us as well on that. But there are a couple of quick things that I wanted to bring up regarding state policy. One is the very property tax levels for different structures. You know, the city of Baltimore, just like many other places, still cannot do that. I think Delegate Boyce has been kind of the leader on that. Please stay on top of that. That's something really important. Most major jurisdictions outside of the state of Maryland have access to doing that. Baltimore City needs that access. There's a bill that, I'm not sure who's carrying it, but the very income tax, the progressive tax structure, allowing, enabling jurisdictions the ability to increase the taxes from the 3.2% rate. That bill that we were trying to push raised it up to 3.5% for folks making over $500,000. That money can go directly to going after some of the concerns that we all deal with on a regular basis. And then the last thing I'll constantly talk about is the pension and retirement and forfeits of benefits for law enforcement. When law enforcement officers utilize their badge and their guns to maim, to hurt individuals in our city and be convicted, they still should not have access to that pension. I believe, it's a bill that I always carry, but I believe last session Delegate Wilkins carried, and asked that the city delegation really look into that and support it. I think Baltimore City is disproportionately impacted by that, and I think it's really important for our citizens that we stand with them and we stop paying for these lawsuits and these settlements. With that, thank you so much for your leadership, Madam Chair. Thank you so much to the city delegation. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. That was a lot, and we thank you for all of that good information. Just want to remind people, if we can stay as close to five minutes as possible because we have a lot of members of the public in the waiting room. But I just want to thank everyone for their testimony thus far. Next, we will be hearing from Mr. Comptroller Bill Henry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the delegation. I will try really hard to stay under five minutes, but many of you know me and you know that there's a lot of things that you guys work on that I care about. But I'd like to start by thanking all of you for hosting this hearing tonight. I appreciate you offering me this opportunity to discuss some of the issues that I will be watching closely in the coming legislative session. Now, while most of my personal policy agenda has its roots in my city council tenure, a few of these issues have also played a part in my first year as comptroller and as a member of the city's Board of Estimates. I'd like to start with tackling our city's digital divide. This is one of the issues about which I'm most passionate, and I urge the General Assembly to support Mayor Scott's efforts, especially by identifying the needed funding to move us towards municipal broadband. Making sure that all families and all small businesses have high-speed access to the internet is a necessary strategy, both for fighting poverty and strengthening Baltimore's economy. I'd also like to echo the council president when it comes to the issue of police pensions. In 2021 alone, the Board of Estimates has approved over $1.7 million in law enforcement-related settlements. Now, while many of these cases involved officers who were found to be acting within policy, some did involve paying out claims for wrongdoings by officers who pled or were found guilty of crimes. Now, if the city is going to get stuck with paying for somebody's crime, the city should have the ability to go after them to recoup our damages. Specifically, we should be able to go after their pension. Now, last year's law enforcement reform bill, HB 670, included a provision that would have accomplished this, but it was amended out of the legislation before final passage. I urge you to reconsider this issue. Please come up with a pension forfeiture policy that would help us help protect the city's bottom line. Next, with $1.5 billion in deferred maintenance for the city's Department of Transportation alone, our infrastructure is of critical importance to all of us. While I'm sure we're all excited to see President Biden's infrastructure proposal become reality, let's be honest, Baltimore's share is still going to be insufficient to address Baltimore's needs. Since DOT's traffic and red light camera programs were established, they have attempted to modify driver behavior to create safer streets, while also generating over $80 million of revenue for the city. Now, whether you believe that the real point of the cameras is to make streets safer or that the real point is to generate revenue, there is no question that the city's streets will be in better shape if the state were to pass legislation requiring that all camera-generated revenue be restricted and only used for transportation-related capital improvements. Much as you did last session with the cameras on I-83, where the revenue can only be used to maintain I-83, all of the red light and speed camera throughout the city, the revenue from those cameras should be going to protect our streets. In the face of a multimillion-dollar lawsuit over our noncompliance, this camera revenue can strengthen our ADA adherence and help our backlog of other improvements, as well as supporting pedestrian, bicycle, and mass transit needs. This probably should be a Baltimore City-only bill because we have unique multimodal transportation needs that, frankly, rural jurisdictions don't have. The final issue I would like to raise tonight actually predates my legislative career. I started working on this as a staffer in the council president's office. That's a shout-out for the mayor, wherever you still here. Yet here we are, literally decades later, and I still find myself meeting with local advocates and representatives like yourselves to discuss legislative solutions to be inequitable and racist auto insurance rates that Baltimore City residents face. Average premiums in predominantly black zip codes in Baltimore City Average premiums in predominantly black zip codes in Baltimore City are ninety four percent higher, nearly double the average premiums in predominantly white communities because insurers focus on where accidents happen when determining rates, not where the drivers in the accidents actually live. If two drivers from out in the counties have an accident here in our city, it's our insurance premiums that go up. That's not right. A fairer calculation process is needed, and that can only be mandated at the state level. And that's it. I want to thank you all and wish you luck. As you head to Annapolis for the general assembly session, it's a job I do not envy. So I want to extend my deep appreciation and occasionally my condolences as you fight really hard for us each day and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller, um, for all of those um priorities that you've lifted up. Thank you um just for your advocacy on behalf of the residents of the city around, you know, good fiscal um practices. So we appreciate um your input. Our next um citywide official we'll be um hearing from is Madam State's Attorney Marilyn Mosby.
Good evening, everyone. I'm having phone problems and issues, so please bear with me. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, City Delegation Members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present to you the legislative agenda for my office this year. You have to excuse me, I'm a little under the weather, but for the most part, I'm here, and I just want to say thank you for all of your efforts um throughout this last legislative session, through the global pandemic. I am so incredibly impressed by all of you and what you all were able to accomplish in a global pandemic, especially around police accountability reform, which is something that has been near and dear to my heart and that we've been pushing for a very long time, and you all got it done unlike other states across the nation. And so I applaud each and every one of you. Um, we're very sad to to see Delegate McIntosh leave, um, but we are very excited for her next um venture as she retires. I want to thank my partners, of course, um Mayor Brendan Scott, and of course, Mr. Council President and and the legislators and city councilmen right here in our city. And I want to also, before I get into my legislative, robust legislative agenda, I just want to acknowledge and say thank you for working with my office to continue to attempt to improve public safety and our criminal justice system in Baltimore City and across the state. We have a very robust legislative agenda this year that will continue to focus on ensuring healthy communities by way of applying one standard of justice in our city, reducing mass incarceration and ending racial injustice within the criminal justice system. Accordingly, we're going to focus our efforts this year on first and foremost, we're going to stop the political rhetoric. And one of the things that we will be opposing, and I'm starting this intentionally, is keeping prosecutions local. And we want to oppose this measure. This is where the governor is planning to introduce measures that would and direct an an additional two point five million dollars to the Office of the Attorney General to fight quote unquote violent crime in the city of Baltimore and in essence would replicate the efforts of my office. The funding would go towards hiring another additional twenty five staff, a mix of prosecutors and analysts. And this was initiated because of the political blame game. And we've done this for far too long. We've done it for six, now seven years. I'm really grateful that we have an opportunity with a new incoming administration to move past it. In any event, I can tell you that, you know, we are going to continue to work with our partners in the mayor's office along with the minute the mayor's administration to focus on violent repeat offenders. And if you look at our conviction rates, it's indicative of that. We have a ninety nine, a ninety percent, over a ninety percent general felony conviction rate, guns. We're taking them off the streets, and police are doing a phenomenal job, have record numbers of guns that they've gotten off the streets this year, and we're getting and securing those convictions despite the fact that our courts have been closed for eighteen months. So that is a measure that we will be vehemently opposing, and I wanted to bring to your attention. Um, again, he's only focusing on Baltimore City because he does not focus like our ideology, which doesn't play well with healthy communities and what we should be focusing on collectively as partners in the criminal justice system. The other thing that we're going to be focusing on, and I think is really important for you all to understand, is that we always put victims first. And about thirty percent of the cases that we get rid of, or we have to dismiss every year, has to do with a lack of victim witness cooperation. And so we've been able, thankfully, through my awesome team to increase the grant funding for victims and 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 support services for victims and witnesses of crimes by almost forty percent during my administration. But this year, we're going to focus like we did last year on victim impact statements. Juvenile transfer waivers, hearing is a pretrial hearing. And right now, Maryland law already requires victims to have notice of the waiver hearing and an opportunity to submit an impact statement in writing to address the court. But the only, the change that we're proposing is to require the court to consider it in these transfer hearings. We want the court to consider those victim impact statements. It's not mandated, and we're saying that it should be. So the other thing that we're going to focus on again in juvenile justice, this is something that we've been advocating for for a very long time, is the reform of the juvenile justice system in and of itself, but juvenile interrogation protections. We're proposing a bill, and this was introduced last legislative session as well, that would protect against false confessions and statements that may lead to a wrongful conviction by requiring that children not only consult with an attorney, but also have their parents, their guardians there so that they are not improperly interrogated. As we know, um, this came to the attention after we exonerated uh three men in 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 Baltimore City who had served more than thirty six years for crimes they didn't commit, uh murders that they didn't commit, and it was because of the false confession of juveniles, thirteen, fourteen year olds that were taken from their home um without their parents' consent, taken from their schools without their parents' consent, and and they were manipulated into false um admissions and identifications of these young folks. The other things that we're going to be focusing on is probation before judgment, facts justifying a finding of guilt and suspension sentence. This bill provides an important step toward combating the injustice and systemic racism found within the Maryland criminal justice system by allowing a PBJ, a probation before judgment finding, not a conviction under Maryland law, which is technically not a conviction, to also not count as a conviction for purposes of federal immigration law. I think that this is incredibly important, and it's vital to act now on this legislation as we address and see these national issues that are percolating that cannot be, we don't want these probation before judgment findings that are not convictions to be unilaterally um addressed by the federal government and become an issue for deportation. And so what we know is that these egregious sort of immigration policies we had hoped would cease have not done so. And so I think this is something that we definitely want to address and and is of concern. The other point that we'll be focusing on and major sort of um advocacy is on the legalization of marijuana. Um, as you all are aware, in July of twenty twenty one, House Speaker Adrian Jones announced that the House intends to pass a bill to refer legalization of voters on the twenty twenty two ballot. We, as we have for the past several years, um, gone, and we fully support legalization of marijuana. I had the awesome opportunity of testifying in Congress and ensuring that that legislation is not just a legalization, but it comes with expungement, with a reinvestment in the communities most harmed by its enforcement, with limitations on how police can interact with people who they suspect of marijuana um offenses and with legal nonpublic spaces, uh, all of these things that are of concern. Uh, and I I I encourage you all, and we will be down there. This is a top priority, but we want to ensure that full inclusion of those especially most impacted through the criminalization of this for so long. Um, so the, the other, and I'm almost finished, I promise, is the other legislation that we'll be pushing is the police reform. I know you guys went really, you did more than a lot of other places, but there's so much more to do. Misconduct in office, we did, uh, we're asking that right now misconduct in office is a common law offense that by default is a misdemeanor, and therefore there's a one year statute of limitations. And so we're going to be asking and requesting that we increase that statute of limitations. And this bill that we are proposing to introduce would change misconduct in office to become a three year statute of limitations and to add language that expressly increases the statute of limitations for any other crime to three years, so long as it's changed with misconduct in office. As you guys can imagine, a number of these cases have to be investigated, and at the point that they are turned over to our office, sometimes it meets, they're already outside of the scope of the statute of limitations. Um, and then Good Samaritan Law will be pushing prosecutor initiated resentencing, giving us a mechanism as prosecutors to be able to reduce sentences if it's in the interest of fairness and justice. I'm not sure all of my colleagues will want it, but I can tell you that we certainly do, and several other states have passed such legislation as Illinois, Washington, Oregon, and California. And then last but certainly not least, jury service and disqualification. This legislation would limit the number of individuals who are currently disenfranchised from serving on juries in our state. We need to understand and recognize um where one third of all Americans have a criminal record. This bill would allow more Marylanders to serve their community through jury jury service. And we can understand the need for that now more than ever, I would say, especially in this past week. And last, I I said last, but lastly, but lifer lookback. And this is allows a person who is incarcerated to file for sentence modification if they meet certain criteria, including serving more than twenty to twenty five years or being fifty five years of age or older. Um, again, this is a piece of legislation that would allow us to have the opportunity to look at lifers, especially juvenile lifers and the elderly prison population that are disproportionately black, especially in the city of Baltimore. And with that, that is our agenda. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to address what our legislative agenda will be and what we are pushing.
Thank you, Madam State's Attorney. Now, you said you were under the weather, but I think we all saw you perk up um through that very comprehensive list of priorities. Um, so thank you so much for um sharing them with us. And um I, we have two more um citywide officials that we'll be hearing from. And so um the next voice you will hear is from the um CEO of Baltimore City Public Schools, Dr. Sonia Sante-Lises.
Great, I want to thank you, uh, Madam Chair and uh the uh esteemed members of the Baltimore City uh delegation. I am Sonia Sante-Lises, CEO of City Schools, and really um want to thank you all for just giving us the opportunity, bringing us together um just for what's really an important conversation at this time of year. Uh, before I begin, I really want to acknowledge uh the work of this body for your support uh during what can only uh be described as unprecedented times um as many of my colleagues and leaders, uh, other city leaders have noted uh this evening. Um, and you really have uh been uh just, you know, truly supportive of our families and our children. Um, before I begin, I do want to give um a brief um brief update of where we are with our um COVID testing program uh before moving into our legislative priorities. We are now moving into the tenth week of asymptomatic testing um across our district. And I'm pleased to report that our COVID mitigation efforts just continue to be effective. Um, and after testing nearly forty six thousand seven hundred students last week, um, our prevalence rates remain at just point two four percent for the second week in a row. So that translates into just twenty five positive cases for every ten thousand people. And that's an incredibly uh low rate of infection. Um, and just to put it a little bit in perspective, uh, the only other school district, thank you Delegate Voice, the only other district that we know that has as an extensive of of a program um that tests approximately fifty five thousand students is New York City. And to put that in perspective, New York City has just over a million students. So we really um just as a full team um are lifting this. And uh what we are doing is really um complicated, but it's really because of the efforts of our testing program um and just really being recognized as a model that we, we really are um working to just to continue to deliver on our commitment um to ensuring that children remain safe um in school. And uh, so I just want you to know that while this physical safety um is absolutely important, I will point out, and I know members um both of this delegation as well as uh other city leaders um have also noted that the mental health needs, the social emotional needs of our children have been um exacerbated during uh the pandemic. And so we know that our students are understandably requiring record levels of support. So it's precisely these concerns um that must remain at the forefront of our minds as uh you all prepare to head back to Annapolis uh for what we know will be an incredibly important ninety days. So along these lines quickly, because, you know, as an ed, as a teacher, former teacher, I want to make sure I keep to uh the prescriptions of the assignment. Um, so I am watching my time. Um, just want you to know that for the past several years, you know, I've come before you to urge your support uh for two landmark pieces of legislation, Kerwin and Bill to Learn. And this delegation, along with our larger community, our city leaders, you really have uh just delivered on your support and uh and and the passing of this key, this key law, and these initiatives are now law. Um, I just want to flag for you that as we begin the work of implementation on the ground, we know that there are going to be components that still may require your attention just in terms of some technical changes um as the reality of legislation and policy um hits what we know is practice on the ground. Uh, similarly, we are extremely in uh interested in tracking the poverty study that MSDE is required to conduct. Um, this was a significant priority of ours during Kerwin discussions. Uh, the new um uh state uh education superintendent has um also expressed interest in uh this priority. So we are just grateful for the language that was ultimately included in the legislation. And we also um urge you all to follow this um, this piece of the legislation closely well. Um, because you all know that the free and reduced lunch, uh, you know, uh, way of counting um and accounting for poverty is really not sufficient, and we've seen that um throughout the last few years. So we're going to be following that. Um, and I also uh just want you to know, because I know transportation has come up a number of times. I know Madam Chair opened uh with noting transportation needs within our community and just want to reiterate that as a priority because student transportation really continues to be a significant challenge, not just in Baltimore City, but as you noticed throughout the state and even the nation. So we look forward to working with you all on any potential solutions um that would help in that area. Um, and then in addition to transportation, we're experiencing some challenges just with students who are not up to date for immunizations. Now, I want to clarify, since I know this is a public hearing, uh, that we're not talking about mandated COVID vaccines. What we're talking about is just the regular immunizations that we know many families uh have fallen behind and due to the last year, and we just don't want that hardship to impact the number of students counted for funding. So we've seen some flexibility at the state level, and we would just like your support. Um, you know, your support in that area legislatively. Um, and then the other piece uh that I will say is that we know that we now have a class of young people who have pushed through the last two years. Um, and we know we have students that were on track to graduate, but who are now going to age out just before they can earn their diploma. And we know the lifetime impact of not having a high school diploma. So we would like the legislature to con- consider an extension uh to give students who have not graduated during this time more time to finish um and knowing that that option will be available and supported for them. And then lastly, uh, we just continue to see challenges with enrollment and attendance. Um, and we look forward um as always to working with you on solutions that would provide a hold harmless um during these challenging times. So I just want to thank um you all um for always uh advocating for Baltimore City students, young people um and families. And I too, I will just add a note that I too gave a little uh teary eyed swipe yesterday when I heard um Delegate McIntosh's announcement, um because she too, like many of you, has just been a champion uh for Baltimore City's children, Baltimore City's schools. And so uh since I I have to dash to another event after this, I just want to make sure if I'm not here um that that you all know that I am, I'm also sending special thanks to your, your colleague and uh friend. So thank you very much. Hopefully I got in within the five minutes, and I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Sante-Lises, you did a good job. I mean, we've heard some pastoral closings. They were accurate. There was a lot of her about to close. I'm about to, you know, people, you know. So you did pretty good as a PK, I'm impressed. But I I also want to lift up that as many of you who are tuning in, keep hearing us lift up Delegate uh Maggie McIntosh's name of District Forty Three and Chair of the House Appropriations Committee and um former teacher in her own right, has been a champion around issues of education broadly for the state, but specifically has been standing in the gap for Baltimore City um students and families for a very long time. And some And some people may have heard, but it's worth bringing up, hey, Chair's privilege. I am joining the Appropriations Committee and joining my colleague Delegate Tony Bridges over there. And I will be on the Education and Economic Development Subcommittee. So, you know, really excited to learn all I can to make sure we're supporting the interests and positive outcomes for our students. So thank you for your leadership, and I understand that you have something to support for your own child. So thank you for the time that you made available for us. And last, but certainly not least of our citywide officials, we will be hearing from the Police Commissioner, Michael Harrison. Thank you for joining us. You have approximately five minutes that we've been giving a bit of grace, but the closer you can stay to that, the best.
I'll do my very best and thank you, Madam Chair, for inviting me to join you and your colleagues tonight. I always look forward to interacting with our state elected officials. I am certainly looking forward to partnering with you during the next session. You know, earlier in this session, Ms. Scott highlighted a few legislative priorities this evening. I want to thank him for his leadership and support. We'll be working hard on a few legislative priorities, including pushing for the ability to terminate BPD members immediately if they engage in behavior that is so egregious as to shock the conscience when there is clear evidence of that type of activity. I want you to think of the incident last year with Officer Derek Chauvin under the new misconduct process under HB 67. I would not be able to fire Derek Chauvin until and unless he was convicted of his crimes. So I truly believe that in order for us to create the type of police department that you and our residents want, deserve and pay for, I have to be able to take immediate action. So we'll be supporting legislation also to limit the use of ghost guns in city. And we're certainly excited about several proposals to regulate the possession of ghost guns. And we think it will help, help us to make our city safer for all who live, work and worship. I can only be with you for a few minutes as tonight I'm running from this meeting to another. But know that my Director of Legislative Affairs, Michelle Worsberger, is on the call, will continue to be here. Will take notes about all in any items that, that are discussed. And so I just appreciate you giving me just an opportunity to come, say hello and talk about a couple of things. And certainly, I look forward to calls from any of you about any ideas you might have to make us safer and to make us stronger. Thank you. I think I came in in the five minutes.
Actually, you know why? I think that ComTrailer Henry is going to be a bit disappointed because he thought he was the most succinct citywide official tonight, and it appears that you have bested him. So I'm glad he's not here to experience this in person, because I think it would be quite upsetting. But we know that the work that you do is no laughing matter, but we know that it's important for you to also be on the ground with community as well as participate in opportunities like this. So we look forward to, with all of our citywide officials, ongoing communication between you, your offices, your staff and our team as we move forward and prep for the session and during the session itself. So thank you so much for your leadership and know that we stand, you know, ever ready to collaborate in the best interest of public safety for our constituents. So thank you for being here this evening.
Thank all of you. Good seeing you all.
Now, we're going to be transitioning, and we're going to have a new member of the delegation lead the next phase. So we'll be hearing from members of the public, and I will be introducing to some, presenting to others, Delegate Regina T. Boyce, also Second Vice Chair for the Baltimore House delegation. So we'll give her opportunity to get herself together. And the next voices we'll be hearing are from some of your neighbors across Baltimore City. Thank you, Delegate Voice.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you all for being here this evening to share with us your priorities, because your priorities are certainly our priorities. Just want to let you know, we do have a timer. You will have two minutes to present your priority, and then we will move on to others. Please let me know if I have mispronounced your name. Most importantly, correct me. I like to be corrected. I think making sure we say folks' names correctly is important. So without further ado, is, I believe, Mr. Timer, ready to go? All right, boss. So first, we're going to have Sally Grant with us. Talking about education, Sally. Sally, do we have you?
Hi. She's coming on the line. Her phone is trying to connect.
Got it, got it, got it.
Madam Vice Second Chair, you could also announce the gentleman that's behind Mrs. Grant while her phone is connecting.
I can do that, Madam Executive Director. We're going to move to the next individual, and I think I've saying this name correctly. It is Joseph Monte, Montane. Talking about transportation. Hi, Joseph. Good evening and welcome. You have two minutes to present.
Oh, yes. It's, it's Montane. You're real close.
Montane, okay, sorry.
My issue is the, the delegation should address is allowing speed cameras across the city. They're currently restricted by Maryland law right now to only in school zones or work zones. And I mean, that's not where all dangerous speeding happens. So I think they should be expanded across the state, but at least in Baltimore City to be wherever local officials or residents want one. And then if not, at least expand the eligibility for, it's currently kindergarten through twelfth grade. And there are some only pre-K providers in the city that have had speed issues, and they're unfortunately not allowed to have speed cameras because they're not kindergarten. So I would ask for that as a, you know, if you can't do the other thing. But broadly, speed cameras, wherever speeding happens, it would be what I was looking for. Thank you.
No, thank you so much. That is, that was a hot topic last session. So thank you so much for bringing that back up. Next, we're going to go back to Sally Gant, if she is in the room.
I believe she's still having some problems.
Okay, we'll go to the next person. We'll, I'll just circle back. The next individual is Reginald Benbow, talking about public safety. Reginald, good evening.
Yeah.
Okay, if you're having trouble with your device, please let, let us know in the chat if you can. If not, you still will be heard. We're just going to keep circling through the list. The next person I'm going to call in is Jackie Addison.
Just go to the next person.
Alrighty, no problem. Next person we're going to go to is Lori Graham. Lori, is Lori with us? Okay, I'm going to keep going down the list.
Did you call Keisha Goatman?
I did not. I'm going to go to Kimmy, I believe that's Sawyer. All right, I'm going to go down the list. Nate Golden. Okay. Give me one minute. I'm doing some extra checking here. Okay. Madam. Madam Executive Director, do we have anyone from the list yet in?
There are a few people that are in the room, so.
I'm, okay, I'll go back down the list. That's, I believe that's Dewan Smith.
Hello, how are you? My name is Dewan Smith, and I am a citizen of Baltimore who is interested in dismantling the school-to-prison pipeline by starting a STEM active school program to provide a safe space while diverting our youth from the juvenile justice system. The incarceration rate in America has escalated at an alarming rate, which has required looking into how the entry youth goes into the juvenile justice system. Interestingly enough, researchers have begun this research with the school-to-prison pipeline. Research has found to fix the problem of escalated incarceration rates, schools must change the school policies surrounding how to discipline students. The incarceration rates within the school-to-prison pipeline disproportionately affects Black and Brown students. This research renders a second look at ex-offenders and shows providing additional assistance to students who have been suspended and expelled. This research goes on to take a second look at correctional education and improve the opportunity for employment for ex-offenders. I should also mention, I have a program by the name of Tech Up Space Academy, which will be located in Baltimore City. This program will assess the need of the youth of Baltimore City who are in the juvenile justice system and youth who would like to learn about opportunities that the STEM career can provide. My question is, what is Baltimore City currently doing to end school-to-prison pipeline? And how can Tech Up Space be a part of those efforts?
Thank you so much for that testimony. Thank you so much. Looking forward to see your program in the city. Next person we have is Laura Garcia.
Good evening, delegates. My name is Laura Garcia, and thank you for the opportunity to share some of my experiences as a primary care provider and medical director. I work at Healthcare for the Homeless Downtown, but I must stress that I am speaking based on my personal experiences today. I hope you will be able to take away some useful information that will inform your decisions in Annapolis this session. First, I want to thank you for passing the paraphernalia decriminalization bill last session. This is a crucial, crucial piece of legislation, so I am here now to urge you to override the governor's veto. I have lived in Baltimore City for eleven years and have worked at my clinic for seven years. I oversee our medication for opioid use disorder and syringe services program in which patients can receive life-saving medicines and clean supplies. The program aims to keep people healthy and alive and work with them to change. Being able to hand someone clean supplies is a crucial tool in helping patients with addiction survive the ravages of this pernicious disease. The threat of prosecution continues to interfere with patients making more responsible health choices and participating in these types of programs. We need to do everything we can to decrease barriers to patients accessing services to improve their own health. Simply put, I have no doubt that at some point, under the current legal regime, patients of mine have been arrested for possessing clean syringes, which were given by our clinic. Clean syringes, which represented their first steps being taken on a journey to reclaim their health. That should never happen. The law should never prevent them from taking that first step. As a final note, thank you for passing legislation to support audio-only medical visits. This has become another crucial tool in our arsenal to deliver services to vulnerable patient populations who often have multiple barriers to showing up at specific times and places for an appointment. And I hope we can continue evolving this model of care. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your work, Laura. It is critically important as we fight this together. I hope you know you have partners in that work. The next person I want to call in is Owen O'Keefe.
Hi, thank you so much, everyone. I'm really happy to be here today. My name is Owen O'Keefe, and I am a resident of the Forty-Third District of Baltimore City. Echoing a lot that was just said, last year, over one thousand Baltimoreans unfortunately lost their lives to overdose. These are over one thousand families that will never be the same because of this preventable death. For context, that's three times more the amount of people who died by homicide in our city last year. I ask that the city delegation keep our continually increasing overdose rates in mind as they enter the 2022 session by supporting any city-led efforts to authorize overdose prevention sites, in addition to supporting the clarification and further expansion of Maryland's Good Samaritan law. I'd also like to thank the delegation for unanimously supporting Senate Bill 420 to decriminalize the possession of drug paraphernalia for personal use. This was the only bill passed by the General Assembly last session to curb rising overdose fatalities. We know that decriminalizing paraphernalia will decrease causes of overdose, such as hiding a substance use disorder due to fear of stigma or incarceration. In the upcoming special session, I ask that the delegation, once again, take a stand against the overdose crisis by voting in favor of overriding Governor Hogan's veto of SB 420. Thank you so much for your time and your commitment to our communities. I appreciate you having me here today.
Thank you, Owen. Thank you to my constituent, and thank you for being an advocate for this important work. The next individual we have, and please correct me if I got, get this wrong, Anakinze Agbo. All right, we will come back. Daryl Carrington. Okay, we will circle back. Andrew Hines. Okay, I'm going to go to Nathan Wilner.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. You're on.
Hi. Well, thank you. Thank you for having me this evening and putting on this program. I think it's a great way for constituents to speak to their elected officials without leaving the comfort of their own home. So I'm here in the Forty-First District, and I really want to tell a story of an incident that can really make a difference, I think, across the city. Unfortunately, a while back, several months, we had a murder within a few blocks of my house. And I've never seen the community come together in a way where there was, you know, really thinking about the victim and the family and working together to help law enforcement, you know, arrest the perpetrators of the crime. But the part that where I think legislators can make a difference is what really worked was raising funds for Crime Stoppers Reward for information for the arrest and conviction of the, of the suspects. And I really saw how that brought added attention to the crime and to, you know, participate in getting information where, where that doesn't exist. We see all across the city, all kinds of situations where the information is not forthcoming. So I'm hoping that this delegation specifically can go to Annapolis and see if there's such a fund can be created where the communities that are suffering with these kinds of high level of violent crimes have a reward fund already available. So they don't have to run around the community to try. It shouldn't be that someone that can raise more funds for a reward gets more attention than someone who doesn't have the ability or the wherewithal to do it. And I really saw that make a major difference. And in a city where so many crimes go unsolved, in this situation, the perpetrators were arrested, bringing solace and comfort to the community and to the victims. So I think that should be taken a look at, and I see my Delegate Tony up there. I think that should be taken a look at. And I see my delegate Tony up there. So hi, Tony Bridges. And thank you for all the work you do. And hopefully this is something that we can get into place for communities across the state, especially in the city.
So thanks. Thank you. No, thank you so much. Thank you for that story. And so glad that that crime was solved in your community. Thank you in your community for stepping up so much. Next, we're gonna call David Arnt.
Hi. Hello, this is Dave Arnt. Can you hear me? Great. My name is Dave Arnt. I'm a Lucas Point resident and a climate, environmental and social justice advocate. These three areas are inseparable and I'm going to focus on legislation at this crucial intersection of these three areas. First is to close Maryland's cold-fired power plants, a really good bill passed the House last year, but it died in the Senate. We need to really get this going again because we need to improve our air quality, our water quality, and stop the creation of toxic ash from being created and distributed throughout Maryland. Also, this will create more jobs as we shift to clean energy. Second, we really need to reinvent the MDE to focus on protecting people and environment. As some of you know, we're in a battle to stop a crematory from being built in a residential neighborhood. Crematoriums can be significant sources of toxic air pollution and don't belong in a residential area. Just recently, three crematoriums were stopped in Pennsylvania when the municipal governments adapted the local clean air laws. Maryland allows for the same, but sadly, the district court decision in 2020 throughout the Maryland Clean Air Act, and we need Maryland's legislature to pass legislation to fix this bad court decision and allow local governments to protect the air quality as strict as the state does. Thirdly, plastics really is the new coal. The emissions from Maryland's use of plastics is equivalent to about two coal-burning fire plants. We must dramatically reduce the use of single-use plastic. There are many ways to do this. First, 10 states have enacted bottle bills, and these states, the container deposit laws do a great job of increasing recycling, reducing litter, saving resources and helping us meet the demand for recycled plastic content. Secondly, we can make producers responsible for packaging and paper products. For examples. Thank you.
Thank you so much, David. I should, I'm sorry, I should remind individuals that you do have two minutes. So we want to hear everything you've got to say. We want to just make sure it's clear, make sure it is certainly succinct and get it all out there because we don't want you not to be able to provide the information you want to us. I'm going back to the top of the list to Sally Grant. Do we have Sally with us? Okay, I'm gonna go back down to Reginald Bimbo. All right, I'm gonna go down again to Jackie Addison. Is Jackie with us? Okay, can we see if Sally may be able to, someone can type up her stuff in the chat and maybe I can just read it out for record? No, Jackie. How about Lori Graham? Lori Graham, okay. How about Kimmy Sawyer? Nate Golden? Okay, how about? Anakinze? Abdu? Okay, how about Daryl Carrington? Okay. We're going to, I guess we're gonna go to our final individual for the night, I believe, is Dwayne Shorty Davis. And just to remind individuals, this is just the individual. Okay, we have Anakinze. You're on, two minutes.
Good evening, Honorable Baltimore City Health Delegation members. My name is Aniquinze Obway.
Go ahead. The floor is yours. You've got two minutes.
Can you hear me?
Oh. We can hear you.
Great. I'm in support of legislation that would change Baltimore City School Board into a majority-elected board that democratically represents the people of the city and puts us in line with the rest of the state. In my role as a parent and city resident, I clearly see how the current appointed board structure limits the ability of myself and others to ensure that our students' needs are prioritized and resources are distributed equitably. Baltimore City is the only jurisdiction in Maryland whose entire school board is appointed and unelected, a status that hasn't changed for 123 years. Of the 23 other Maryland county school boards, 19 are fully elected and four are an appointed elected hybrid. We're also the only majority-black jurisdiction in Maryland without an elected board. In Charles County, all nine board members are elected, and in Prince George's County, nine board members are elected and four are appointed. We are still limited relative to other counties after two elected seats are added in 2022. I believe that the work of school board commissioners is so critical and vital to a bright future for Baltimore City that adults and students in these positions should be compensated for it. Our city is one of two jurisdictions in Maryland where board members are not paid for their work. The other 22 counties that compensate board members range across the poorest to the wealthiest in Maryland and do so with existing state and local education funds per Maryland State Department Education guidelines. When board members are paid, they can dedicate more time and energy to this work. Compensation also opens up these positions to more residents who earn less incomes and learn less income and also have less flexible jobs. Our students of Baltimore City are also intelligent and capable. That's why I trust the student commissioner to deliberate and vote on issues that impact students the most. Expanding their voting rights to be equal with adult members is important for effective oversight. In Maryland, student members in Montgomery and Anarola Counties have full voting rights, with the latter holding this status since the creation of the position 46 years ago. Per ethics policies and board council, all adult and student board members recuse themselves when conflicts of interest are identified between them and staff. In closing, these changes merely bring parity in school board governance between Baltimore City and the rest of the state. Please support this legislation when it is introduced next year. Respectfully, Aniquinze Obway.
Thank you, Aniquinze. Thank you for pronouncing your name, Aniquinze. All right. Thank you all so much. Because we haven't heard from anyone else, we hope that those who were not in the room but signed up would at least send us per email your priorities. And we can put your, our email, the Baltimore City Delegation email in the chat for you to send that information. At this time, we're moving to the second portion of the of the, of our event tonight, and it's essentially for all your organizations. So all of you who signed up as an organization will be heard. Next, I'm turning it back over to Madam Chair Delegate Stephanie Smith.
Thank you so much, Delegate Boys, for your poise and for your facilitation through technical challenges on behalf of some of our witnesses. Now, we will be transitioning to our witness testimony from an individual that will be testifying on behalf of organizations. And at this time, the first vice chair, Delegate Tony Bridges, will preside over on this portion of testimony. Thank you, Delegate Bridges.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and also thank you Delegate Boys for shepherding us through the first half of our participants. I know there are a number of participants here for the second portion, and this portion is really for our organizational and institutional leadership and other organizations as well that have signed up. And so again, we're gonna ask for your patience as we try to get through this. There are a number of organizations and representatives on here. And so again, we just want you all to remember that you have two minutes in total to present to the delegation. And we are gonna start, I believe we have the Baltimore Teachers Union President in here with us, DiAmonte Brown. If you are on, you have your two minutes.
Thank you, Delegate Bridges. I am DiAmonte Brown from the Baltimore Teachers Union. And I am here to, and the Baltimore Teachers Union represents teachers and paraprofessionals and school-related personnel. And currently, unfortunately, our paraprofessionals and school-related personnel are majorly underpaid, like many workers here in Baltimore City and across the nation. And so we would like the delegation to take up increased wages for our paraprofessionals and school-related personnel as a priority this legislative session. Currently, we have paraprofessionals and school-related personnel that are only making a little above $15 an hour, and that is with the recent 2.25% raise. They're nowhere near a living wage, which is what we all should be getting paid at this point. And we do believe that we, if we can increase these wages, then that will also increase people's desire to want to work for Baltimore City Public Schools. And for people that don't know, school-related personnel include people like one-on-one aides, school secretaries, our bus transportation aides, many people that work with our special needs students. And when we are talking about limited resources for special needs students, many of those limited resources are human resources, notably our paraprofessionals and school-related personnel. So we hope that the delegation will take this up as an issue this legislative session, maybe in the form of expanding Kerwin so that we can work towards getting our paraprofessionals and school-related personnel in Baltimore City closer towards a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you, DiAmonte. One day, I'm gonna get your name right. I appreciate you correcting me as always. And we appreciate the work that you and our education professionals do as well. So we appreciate you being here tonight. We're gonna stick with the education theme and from Strong Schools Maryland, I believe we have Samoya Gardner, who was also with us tonight.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. Hello, everyone. And good evening, members of the Baltimore City Delegation to the General Assembly. Thank you for your collective history of dedication and good work for students and school communities. While Strong Schools Maryland is not near to you all, what may surprise you is to learn that we are still active, even though the blueprint for Maryland's future became law earlier this year. This is because we know the most dangerous point in the journey of any law is the implementation phase, where we find ourselves now. That is where visions go to either be realized or maligned. And Strong Schools Maryland is committed to sticking around to actively monitor the implementation of the blueprint with our statewide network team leaders, as well as continuing to advocate for public schools that equip their graduates to thrive. The delegation's support of the blueprint was unanimous both in 2020 and 2021. It is imperative that that support extends to the full funding of the law passed fiscal year 2026, as well as looking into state and local implementation. Even now, the faithful, equitable and transparent implementation of the blueprint is being threatened. The governor has refused to release millions of dollars in mandated funding to allow the Blueprint Accountability and Implementation Board to function. Imagine being charged with implementing a multi-billion-dollar innovative piece of legislation without the funding to hire staff or provide technical assistance to local school systems who are also attempting to do innovative things for the first time. We have seen this before, and I urge you all to examine the status of implementation both locally and at the state level. In addition to implementation monitoring and sustainable funding of the blueprint, our legislative priorities are gonna be building on the intent of the law over six areas: resource equity, transparency and accountability, early learning and intergenerational family supports, educator quality and diversity, whole student supports, post-graduation pathways and conducive learning conditions. This is a watershed moment for public education, and though we've done so much, our work is not nearly complete. We need you all to continue to be the champions that you have been, even as things get difficult. Partner with us, share information and the data we put out, and please continue to meet with our team leaders, many of whom are Baltimore residents like myself. Thank you and good luck in Annapolis.
Thank you, and I'm sure we'll see you once again in Annapolis this year. We appreciate you being here tonight. For those of you who are in the room, the presenter list has been posted in the chat, so you know when you're coming up next. And if you are looking at that list, Elizabeth Hafey from Johns Hopkins University of Medicine, you are on now. You have your two minutes.
Great, thank you. Happy to be here tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you, to discuss some of the work that we've been doing in the community, and also to discuss some of our priorities for this upcoming session. I wanted to update you on three primary areas since last December, when I was here last time. Since February of 2021, Johns Hopkins has vaccinated more than 20,000 patients through our mobile vaccination efforts. We continue to collaborate with the Baltimore City Health Department on these community efforts, and we have recently launched our first clinics for children, teens and their families. We are, we continue to be a resource for the community, especially through our coronavirus resource center and other links on our sites. And the second area is economic development and community initiatives. We have a lot of work happening in that space. I'll highlight a couple. Hopkins Local is now in its second phase initiative to support economic growth and employment opportunities in Baltimore. I provided some information in our written testimony about that. And then we are also partnering with the mayor's office of small businesses to support, celebrate, uplift Baltimore Main Streets, beginning November 27th and running through the holidays in our Small Business Saturday. And then third, as you all know, we have hired a new vice president for public safety, Dr. Granville Bard, to oversee our operations across our campuses and facilities worldwide. And recently, we launched the Behavioral Health Crisis Support Team, a mobile co-responder program that pairs clinicians with our specially-trained safety personnel to respond to behavioral health crises. And lastly, to touch on some of our key priorities, we are pursuing legislation with a coalition of stakeholders in Maryland, DC and Virginia that would create a medical excellence zone within those three states where providers may practice telemedicine in those jurisdictions. This will ensure continued patient access to care and to address some of the workforce challenges that we are currently experiencing. And lastly, we do have a capital request this session to provide continued support of our new medical research building on our East Baltimore Medical Campus to support and bolster our research efforts. Thank you again for this opportunity to speak with you all tonight. We look forward to being, continuing to be a resource for you and your constituents. So with that, thanks.
You, Elizabeth. Always good to see you. And next we'll have from the Baltimore branch of the NAACP, its president Reverend Colby Little. Reverend Little, did I see you on here? You gotta unmute yourself and I will give you a few minutes, but until then, I'm gonna move on. I'll come back to you. And I'm gonna move on to Veronica Jackson from Pivot. Veronica, if you're on. You have your two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Veronica Jackson, and I want to thank you all for being here and taking time out of your day. I am the new executive director for Pivot. We are a women's workforce reentry program here in Baltimore. And I just want to share a testimonial which will highlight what our main goal and priority is going to be this year. Imagine being a woman from Baltimore City, serving 22 years, getting released from prison, coming back to the streets and being connected with a workforce development program. You obtain employment that allows you to obtain a job that is making $40,000 a year. You've worked on your credit, you've done personal success coaching, mental health wellness, all of the things that is required for you to be a returning, upstanding citizen. However, because you are a convicted felon, you are unable to obtain housing. No, regardless of your credit score, regardless of No, regardless of your credit score, regardless of your income, time and time again, you are denied. This is what oftentimes many of our women and participants face. And so with this, we are asking that our delegates help us to prioritize initiatives around specialized housing for returning citizens. Oftentimes, returning citizens can do all of the things to make them upstanding citizens. However, the one thing that they are always struggling with, and it makes it hard for them to maintain the foundation and momentum that they need, is qualifying for housing based off of their felony charges. So with that being said, I ask that as you all return to Annapolis this year, you support any initiatives that helps to fund reentry funding, especially surrounding returning citizens' housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. We definitely appreciate you being here and for your testimony as well. Before I try to go back to Reverend Little, let's try to get from the Cash Campaign of Maryland, Robin McKinney. Robin, are you there? Yep. Good to see you, Robin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Baltimore City Delegation. I'm Robin McKinney, co-founder and CEO of the Cash Campaign of Maryland. We help load them out our income individuals with their families, with their money. And thank you all so much for your generous support of us to help more than 10,000 households in Maryland to get their taxes done for free. I'm here to speak to you actually about unemployment insurance, which is a newer issue for us, but it's an issue that we are hearing from clients all over the place, in the city and across the state. I'm here also speaking on behalf of the Public Justice Center and the Maryland Center for Economic Policy, who we've been working on this issue with. Come to you to talk really about two issues. One is Beacon is broken. I can't tell you how many phone calls we have had, and I know you all have too, with folks who are trying to access information, particularly about overpayments and what has happened and what's going on. We're having people get their benefits cut. They can't access the information. People who can't do their weekly certifications, and so then they're losing benefits. I've been helping a woman. Thank you so much to Delegate Rosenberg's staff, who's helped me with someone in his district who, you know, is an older person and trying to help them to navigate what's happening. We've had people go down to the unemployment office, and it hasn't worked out for them to even give their forms directly to unemployment. Beacon is broken. They are understaffed. It's unacceptable. We have so many people now that are waiting for benefits, and these are fixable problems. We are understaffed even from before the pandemic. These are budget choices that the administration has made, and we need to do better by these residents in Baltimore City. The second thing I wanted to flag is that this is not just an issue for claimants. It's also an issue for employers. Cash Campaign has now three times had state funds held up because of an issue with unemployment. So we had a six thousand dollar charge. We could not understand what it was for. We took six months to try to find out what it was, and finally just paid it because it was holding up over two hundred thousand dollars of state funds. When I went into the system two months later, it said that there's a refund available of the exact same amount that I paid them in June. Right now, I have thirty-five thousand dollars that's being held up, over fifteen dollars and eighty-eight cents that was just levied in October, that was from June of 2020, and no one can explain to me what it's for. I've wasted hours of our staff time, and all of this is holding up money that we need to pay our staff. And so to have employers, frankly, and nonprofits being extorted is a problem. So thank you for your support.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that to our attention as well. I'm sure Delegate Rosenberg and his staff is always a great help with so many things. So thank you. And next, we are gonna go back to Reverend Colby Little. Reverend Little, I think we're able to help you out with this now. Are you on, Reverend? All right, we're still gonna work on. We will get you on here, but until then, we're gonna go to the next person. We will have next from Ask Me Maryland, the Field Director Denise Gilmore. Denise, if you can come on, we will give you two minutes as well.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. For the record, my name is Denise Gilmore. I am the Field Director for AFSMI Council III. We represent approximately thirty thousand state and higher education employees across Maryland, including roughly eight thousand employees here in Baltimore City, who have been on the front line every day during this pandemic. Really quickly, on behalf of our members, I'd also like to take a moment to join in the chorus of, you know, those singing praises and thanking Delegate Maggie McIntosh for her leadership and advocacy over the years on so many of our issues that have come before the Appropriations Committee. Truly thank you for standing with our members and the vital services they provide. Tonight, I wanted to touch on AFSMI's legislative priorities for the upcoming legislative session. Starting with the December special session, there's an incredibly important bill that the General Assembly passed last session. We thank you all for your support, and we hope that you will override the governor's veto. This bill would consolidate collective bargaining for public higher education employees, allowing for one contract to cover them, just like one contract covers state employees. It will be a huge win for higher education employees. There's also a smaller bill, SB seven seventeen, we hope will be overridden as well. I would be remiss without thanking you, Delegate Tony Bridges, for introducing the cross file to that bill. I also want to talk about collective bargaining, which we believe plays an integral role in providing access to the middle class and stability for many families here in the city. You know, back in December 2017, ASME and the Hogan Administration had reached an impasse in bargaining over new economic terms. You know, a fact finder was brought in. They reviewed the data and arguments. They determined that, you know, what the union was proposing was fair and appropriate. Well, the Hogan Administration responded by doing nothing. And they did that because they could. There's nothing in Maryland law that compels the resolution of a collective bargaining session. This hurts Baltimore City, as you've heard before, because wages are becoming increasingly uncompetitive. We have thousands of state positions that are vacant in areas that could assist with reentry and areas that could assist with our unemployment, you know, crisis that we have right now, because the state simply cannot recruit and retain workers. It also hurts our local economies, because when our members get a raise, they're sending it right back here in our neighborhoods. Thank you so much, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you, Denise. That's how it becomes pretty short, once you start talking. So we appreciate you being here and bringing that to our attention.
Heard of working with you.
Yep. We are going to go to Mr. William Merritt from AARP. If you are on. Mr. Merritt? If not, we will try to come back to you, because I believe
I'm on if you want to take me now.
Actually, Mr. Merritt, if you can give us one second, because we finally have been able to get Reverend Colby Little open and able to speak. And so Reverend Little, I want to give you the opportunity, so we don't mess this up. So in two minutes, sir, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Delegate Bridges. Greetings, Delegate Smith, Chair of the delegation, and to all of the members of the delegation. I am Colby Little, and I represent the Baltimore NAACP. I want to start by asking all of us to say a prayer for Julius Jones in Oklahoma, an innocent man who is on death row, who the parole board has said should have his sentence commuted, but the governor of Oklahoma, to this point, is still silent. Please say a prayer for an innocent man facing death. There are too many black people in jail in Maryland. Seventy percent of the prison population in Maryland is black. And I raise this in the context of talking about the state's symbols. The state flag is a white appeasement flag that was designed to bring unity between the Confederate supporters in Maryland and the Union supporters. The Crossland Banner was used as the flag flown by Confederate troops. It is outrageous that in the state of Maryland, we are the state that has white supremacist symbols still in our flag, not Florida, not Mississippi, not Alabama, not Louisiana, Maryland. So I'm hoping that there are members of this delegation that will take up the charge to begin to study how we change our state flag and how we change a state seal that is a picture of a white farmer and a white fisherman, colonizers, invaders, enslavers, certainly not representative of who we are as a state today. In fact, I'm calling on this delegation to find members who will sponsor legislation to make sure that our state symbols, from the flag to the seal to everything else, represents who we are as a plural state and also represents who we are as a democratic state and not a part of a monarchy or a kingdom. With that, I will say that we would urge you to support efforts that will come before you this session as it relates to medical debt, qualified immunity, supporting the next round of law enforcement reform. We hope that we'll see legislation that presents a plan for COVID equity recovery, recovery that's based in equity. We support the ideas around probation before judgment for youth, including the federal immigration issues. We also believe that it's time for us to have regional public transportation equity and accomplish that through an authority. Finally, as you all address redistricting, as you address legislative redistricting for the Maryland General Assembly, we think it's important to maintain the political power and character of the Baltimore delegation. And that means if the city is to lose not only forty-four A, but also partial representation in one of the remaining five Senate districts, that it should be a district that does, it should be, it should be District Forty-Six, basically. That's the point. And so as you all approach redistricting, we hope that your efforts at redistricting will maintain black political power, will elevate the representation of immigrant and Latinx communities in this city, and that is done in a way that the maps look fair and are fair and aren't gerrymandered. And that there is not a sense of power plays by people in leadership to preserve their districts over doing the right thing. Thank you. God bless each of you.
Yep, thank you, Reverend Little. Definitely, we hear you. We appreciate your presentation. And we appreciate everyone's patience as we're trying to navigate some of the technical difficulties that always come along with things like this, right? And so with that, I know we have Mr. William Merritt from AARP. You are up next, and after him, we'll hear from Ricara Jones from 1199 SEIU. So, Mr. Merritt? Mr. Merritt, did we lose you? We may have lost Mr. Merritt. Ricara Jones, 1199 SEIU.
Yes, good evening. Madam Chair and members of the Baltimore City Delegation, my name is Ricara Jones. I live in the Forty-first District, High Delegate Bridges. I'm also the Political Director with 1199 SEIU. We are the largest healthcare union in the country and represent some of the hardest-working employees in hospitals and nursing homes across the state. Tonight, we are asking a delegation to make paid family leave a priority this session. This bill was sponsored by Senator Hayes, and I want to thank you for all of your leadership on this issue. We all know that the current family leave system in the state and across this country is broken. The pandemic has only helped to highlight the problems and the issues with FMLA during the pandemic. And before, we saw employees having to make the impossible choice between staying home and caring for an aging family member or child, or going to work so they could keep the rent paid and the lights on. How many people do you all know that had to take time off of work because they were critically ill from COVID, or they had a sick child they needed to quarantine with? And if you didn't have sick time, then you weren't getting paid, right? So the federal government did put in some temporary measures, but they've ended. The pandemic isn't over, and the need for workers to be able to take time off to care for family members also isn't over. We also know that low-wage workers and workers of color were disproportionately affected by the lack of paid family leave. And last year, we saw a record number of women that were forced to leave the workforce as a result. So we're just asking a delegation to support the proposed legislation that many of you have seen for years, unfortunately. But it would make sure that employers and employees pay a small amount into a fund. And then when an employee has a baby, or they need to take care of a sick family member, they can still earn a portion of their pay while they take some leave. This is long overdue, and if we had a paid family leave policy, those who really need the care could actually receive the care from a family member, and working people wouldn't be so fearful that they would lose their jobs or not be able to financially support themselves if they are providing care. This also helps businesses by reducing turnover and boosting the economy. So we're asking that next session, you make a strong paid family leave policy a priority. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricara. Always good to see you. We have a number of folks on here still, so I'm gonna try and go through this list. As I was going through, it looks like some of these folks may have dropped off. And so I'm gonna call out Val Pappas Brown or Travis Simon for SEIU Local 500. If not, I'm going to move on to Mr. Samuel Jordan, Baltimore Transi Equity Coalition. If not, we will have Glenn Smith from the same organization. If Glenn is not on here, we will move on to Stacy Jefferson from Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore. Stacy, I know you're on here.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Vice Chair and Madam Chair and members of the delegation. Again, for the record, Stacy Jefferson, I'm the Director of Policy and Stakeholder Engagement at Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore. We're a nonprofit organization that oversees the public system of care for mental health and substance use disorders in Baltimore City, and currently serve about seventy-seven thousand people annually. I provided a copy of our twenty twenty-two policy priorities, so I won't go through all of them. I just have a couple of key points that I want to touch on, but then also my colleague, Dan Rabbit, will be talking specifically about the G-Bricks Project and the policies around expanding crisis services. One, I want to highlight workforce. We know with the increased demand, especially in light of the COVID pandemic, that we've had pervasive workforce challenges. People are really experiencing long delays in receiving care due to the lack of available and racially and culturally diverse providers. And so we ask that the state look at and address through a variety of ways improving our workforce, including professional licensing reform, compensation incentives like longer payment and comprehensive benefits, just to name a couple. And then also, I know that a couple people have already mentioned harm reduction and particularly overdose prevention sites. I want to highlight that the Behavioral Health Systems Baltimore is a member of the Bridges Coalition, which is an advocacy coalition that is advocating for overdose prevention sites in our state and city. We fully support the establishment. I just want to mention that I am a family member. I have lost two family members to opioid overdose within the span of two years, in 2015 to 2017. And I know the tragedy and the trauma that families face when losing a loved one, and OPS works. We know that over the one hundred sites that are in the world, there has not been a single fatal overdose in those sites. And so it is important that we look at this issue and we look at innovative ways. And so I just want to end with that, and thank you again for the opportunity we present, and we look forward to working with the delegation on these issues.
Thanks, Stacy. We look forward to working with you as well. I believe Dan Rabbit is on here as well.
Yeah, thank you, Delegate, and good evening, members of the delegation. My name is Dan Rabbit. I'm a new Policy Director at BHSP, colleague of Stacy's, and I focus on the Greater Baltimore Regional Integrated Crisis System, or G-Bricks Partnership, as well as other behavioral health crisis response policies. Thanks for the opportunity to share our priorities. I want to specifically talk about the transition to nine eight eight as the new suicide prevention and behavioral health crisis hotline. First, as you may know, the G-Bricks Partnership is a five-year initiative that BHSP is coordinating to expand and strengthen the crisis response system. The goal of this partnership is to invest in services and infrastructure so that we can reduce our reliance on law enforcement and hospital emergency rooms for mental health and substance use crisis response. People experiencing a serious crisis need help, not handcuffs. If you or a loved one are in distress, you should not have to wait hours and hours at the emergency room to get care. While G-Bricks is working on this in the Greater Baltimore region, a parallel initiative is happening at the federal level, which is the transition to nine eight eight. a parallel initiative is happening at the federal level, which is the transition to nine-eight-eight. It's a three-digit number designated by Congress to serve as the new national suicide prevention and behavioral health crisis hotline. This transition will occur in July in two thousand twenty-two, and will be supported by a national promotional campaign. But there's a lot that individual states need to do to prepare for that transition and to take advantage of this opportunity. We see this transition to this new three-digit number, nine-eight-eight, as a pretty unique opportunity to focus in on increasing access to the life-saving services that mental health and substance use crisis response can provide. To support this transition, we'll be pursuing legislation that creates a nine-eight-eight trust fund where that will invest in the network of call centers that support crisis response and suicide prevention, as well as other crisis services, such as mobile crisis teams and stabilization centers. We're asking for an initial ten million dollars, which is what is estimated is needed for call centers to meet the expected demand. So we hope that you can support this effort, and we look forward to working with you.
Dan, we look forward to working with you as well. Next, we have Joshua Fannin from the Baltimore Fire Officers. Joshua.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Baltimore delegation. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight. My name is Josh Fannin, and I am the President of Baltimore Fire Officers International Association of Firefighters Local nine sixty-four. It is my duty to inform you of certain legislative priorities of the professional firefighters of Maryland this upcoming session. For many years, we have been very successful in enacting common sense legislation for the safety and well-being of our firefighters throughout the state, and we hope this year to be no different. Therefore, I ask you to consider voting in favor of each of these proposed bills that I will provide a brief overview of here. First, the Hometown Heroes Act has been introduced in many forms over the last six years. Simply, the bill seeks to reduce the tax liability of retired first responders by exempting an amount of their pensions from taxation. Currently, that amount is at fifteen thousand dollars, and we are seeking an increase to twenty thousand. Additionally, we seek removal of the sixty-five and older Sunset Clause, which terminates the benefit at age sixty-five. Second, for cancer protection, per and polyfluoroalkyl substances, more easily abbreviated as PFAS, is a known harmful chemical compound that is used in all sorts of daily products. The Environmental Protection Agency has declared PFAS a toxic chemical and therefore not safe in the human body at any levels. We are seeking an outright ban on the use of these chemicals. Their use is dangerous for humans, and there are safer alternatives. Similarly, oriented strand board, or OSB, uses a type of glue which is suspected of producing carcinogenic compounds upon reaching ignition. We are seeking to ban the use of OSB with this type of glue in the firefighter training environment. Third, we have refined the concept of our peer support as it pertains to the fire service over the last few years. Peer support refers to our members who are trained as counselors of firefighters who are experiencing personal or professional difficulties. In order to preserve the sanctity of the conversations between our peer support counselors and members seeking counseling, we are pursuing confidentiality protections. Thank you very much for your time and attention to these matters, and please don't hesitate to reach out at any time for more information on these or other firefighter legislative matters.
Thank you, Josh. We appreciate your presentation as well. In the background, you're doing us all wrong over here. We appreciate you. Wish I had a better one. So next, from Healthcare for the Homeless, we have Dr. Jessica Friedman.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jess Friedman. I'm a family physician at Healthcare for the Homeless, and I live in Baltimore City, District forty-three. Three months ago, while driving to work, I saw a man bumped over on the side of the street, and I pulled over. Two other men were attempting to revive him. They'd already given him one dose of naloxone with minimal effect. And so while handing them a second dose and advising them to administer it, I called nine-one-one. And I made sure that he didn't need CPR. As the sirens approached, one of the men slipped away. Paramedics arrived, and I resumed my commute to work. I'm really grateful for the work that our state and local governments have done in increasing naloxone availability. In the upcoming session, I urge the Maryland General Assembly to authorize overdose prevention sites. For a variety of reasons, including shame and stigma, many of my patients who use drugs use them alone. I worry about them dying by overdose, and some have. No one should have to rely on casual bystanders to reduce, reverse an overdose. But we must support them when they do intervene, and that's why it's important to expand the Good Samaritan Law. Patients have told me of their husbands to call emergency services for another's overdose because of their outstanding warrants. Many people who overdose require multiple doses of naloxone or prolonged monitoring in a medical setting. And a friend or neighbor's warrant status shouldn't be the determining factor in whether they live. In my remaining time, I want to pivot to discuss the rapid growth we have seen in the number of patients in our clinic who are undocumented immigrants and ineligible from Medicaid. Many forego both preventive healthcare and disease treatment because of its costs. I often discover that my pediatric patient's mother has received limited or no prenatal care here in Baltimore because they could not afford it. Others refuse to go to the emergency department when needed because prior visits have resulted in large bills, followed by aggressive bill collectors. I thank the General Assembly for the work that is already done in expanding Medicaid eligibility in the state, and I encourage it to consider including undocumented immigrants. Thank you so much for providing this opportunity, and have a great evening and a good session.
Thank you, Jess, and thank you for the opportunity to talk to us tonight as well. We appreciate you. There are still a number of individuals who are signed up to speak tonight. We again ask that you keep your comments to two minutes. We are also going to move on to Pastor Shannon Wright from UEI. Pastor Wright, are you on? If not, we are going to move on to Gabriella Carl.
Good evening. I'm Gabriella Carl, the Associate Director of the Chappelle Center for Immigrant Justice at the Maryland Carey Law School, a Baltimore City resident, and I'm here to lift up a criminal and immigrant justice reform bill. Probation Not Deportation is sponsored by Senator Susan Lee and Delegate Wenica Fisher, and co-sponsored by Senate President Bill Ferguson. If passed, probation not deportation will prevent the unintended and unjust detention and deportations of even lawful Maryland immigrants. Under Maryland law, as State's Attorney Moes B. pointed out, even lawful immigrant residents like green card and alcohol holders are excluded from the full benefit of probation. Probation Before Judgment is a disposition codified by the Maryland General Assembly to give first-time offenders of minor crimes the opportunity to take responsibility for mistakes without saddling them with the stigma of a criminal conviction. But because of how the statute is currently structured, Maryland immigrants who accept probation can find themselves subject to mandatory immigration detention and deportation proceedings. Probation, which was intended by the state of Maryland as a warning, no more than a slap on the wrist, has permanently separated Maryland families, landed children in foster care, caused financial devastation, and been tantamount to a death sentence for even lawful immigrants if deported. Probation Not Deportation proposes an equitable solution. Amend the probation statute so that it includes an additional process for obtaining probation before judgment that would not trigger adverse immigration consequences like deportation and detention. The state of Virginia enacted a bill just like this one last year in recognition of the same problem, while the Maryland General Assembly failed to do so, even though the important work of the legislature is to create policy that protects vulnerable people and ensures equal justice under the law. In addition, we know that the criminal justice system has acted as a direct funnel to the immigration system because of the prevalence of racial profiling and discriminatory policing. Black and brown immigrants are more likely to suffer harm because of Maryland's probation before judgment statute. By passing Probation Not Deportation, the Maryland General Assembly can prevent racial injustice, demonstrate that Black Lives Matter, keep Maryland families together, and ensure that all people get equal treatment under its laws. Thank you for your time.
You. We appreciate you being on here with us tonight. Next, we are going to hear from Eric Smith. Eric, are you on? If not, we are going to move on to Eric Lopez.
Good evening, Vice Chair of Bridges and Honorable Baltimore City delegation. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this evening. And I'm testifying on behalf of the Capital Area Immigrants Rights Coalition, the CARE Coalition, just based here in Baltimore across the street from the Baltimore Immigration Courts. And I'm speaking in support of the Universal Representation Bill that provides access to counsel to immigrants facing deportation. And Baltimore City residents have been benefiting from a Baltimore program that I'll talk about in just a second, of benefiting from legal representation in the immigration context, which has had an incredible impact on outcomes for these Baltimore City residents. I also wanted to urge delegation to support the Probation Not Deportation Bill, as these bills are very much linked for reasons I'll explain in a moment. In two thousand seventeen, the Open Society Institute of Baltimore partnered with MIMA, which is the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs in Baltimore City, spearheaded by Catalina Rodriguez of MIMA, to create a fund to protect Baltimore City's vulnerable immigrant residents from ICE and ICE enforcement. Now, this is critical because ICE enforcement leads to family separation. The majority of immigrants in detention by ICE are proceeding through a very complex labyrinth of immigration laws without legal representation. They do not have a, while they have a right to legal representation, it is not provided by the government. And this means that overwhelming majority of immigrants proceed without counsel. Now, the outcomes of this and the consequences of this are consequential in that only about four percent of these immigrants without representation succeed in their claims. This leads to family separations. This leads to the dismantling of communities, of neighborhoods. The children of immigrants, U.S. citizen children often, and U.S. citizen spouses pay the consequences. I've seen firsthand, and my team of attorneys has seen firsthand.
Time is up.
Please, we urge you to support universal representation and the Probation Not Deportation Bills. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation to us tonight. Mr. Johnny Martin. Not sure if I saw him on here. If not, we will continue to move on from the Maryland Commission on African-American History and Culture. We'll start with Chanel Compton.
Greetings, Baltimore City delegation and Delegate Tony Bridges. Great to see you, sir. I'm a Baltimore City resident, and I thank you for all that you do to uplift our city. My name is, like Tony Bridges said, Chanel Compton. I'm the Executive Director of the Maryland Commission on African-American History and Culture and the Banneker Douglas Museum. I and our commission will be meeting with many of you during the upcoming legislative session about African-American heritage preservation causes in Maryland. For over fifty years, the Maryland Commission on African-American History and Culture has authentically preserved and presented black history, art, and culture as a tool for racial equity, community empowerment, and social change. The commission was founded in nineteen sixty-nine under the leadership of Maryland Senator Verta Freeman Welcome, just one year after King's assassination. Senator Welcome was the first black woman senator in Maryland, and her legacy is currently preserved at the Banneker Douglas Museum. Her vision was to develop a state commission to preserve and authentically present black history to inspire communities and help abduct racism in Maryland. Our work includes operating the Banneker Douglas Museum, our state repository for black history and culture, and operating the African-American Heritage Preservation Grant, the state's one million dollar grant capital grant program. I am Commissioner Edwin T. Johnson, who you'll hear from next, come to you this evening to share our cause to increase the African-American Heritage Preservation Grant Program and the capital and operational budget of the Banneker Douglas Museum. The museum is in significant capital needs. DGS has done a program assessment of our facility, which equates up to three million dollars in critical capital repairs. Our operational budget pretty much keeps our museum open, and the little staff salaries that we currently have, less than three percent of our current budget supports exhibits, collections, and public programs and marketing efforts. We are, will be working with you this upcoming legislative session to increase our budget to one point six million dollars, which will support our collection program, our much-needed staffing, educational programs throughout the state of Maryland. Thank you so much for all that you do, and next you'll hear from Commissioner Dr. Edwin T. Johnson. Thank you.
You, Commissioner Johnson.
Good evening, honorable delegates, and thank you for hearing from me and my esteemed colleague, Director Compton. The ask again is to increase the African-American Heritage Preservation Grant from the one million dollar annual allocation to five million dollars. The African-American Heritage Preservation Program provides grants to assist in preserving building sites or communities of historical and cultural importance to the African-American experience in Maryland. The grant is administered as a partnership between the Maryland Historical Trust and the commission. The program receives an annual appropriation of one million dollars. Since two thousand twenty, two thousand and ten, the commission, in partnership with the Maryland Historic Trust, has awarded up to twelve million dollars to over eighty preservation grants in the state of Maryland. The grant was legislated in two thousand and ten to meet funding disparities in African-American heritage preservation. In the past five years, the commission has received, on average, three point four million dollars in urgent requests, but can only award one million to meet those needs. In the last five years, African-American heritage capital projects have had access to less than one million dollars of the twelve million dollars of the overall general state heritage funds. The commission aims to increase the preservation grant from one million to five million dollars to meet statewide African-American heritage sites' capital and non-capital funding needs. Our goal is to strengthen the capacities of African-American heritage sites and to help economic revitalization, historic preservation, and community development throughout the state. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and thank you both for all the work that you do with the commission, as well as with the Banneker Douglas Museum. We appreciate you.
Thank you for your support.
Next, we will hear from Kelly Quinn.
Hi there. Good evening. My name is Kelly Quinn, and I am a Baltimore City resident, proudly in District forty-six, and also the Deputy Director of the Choice Program at UMBC. And tonight, one of the twenty-four partner organizations who imagine and organize for school communities supported by educators who are invested in abolition and liberation. Last week, I found myself wishing for a beanbag chair for every child in Baltimore City schools, maybe even around the state of Maryland. Maybe you too read Liz Bowie's article in the Baltimore Sun about a really special program and a really quite tender portrait of what was happening at Glenmont Elementary Middle School, where children can decompress in the corner in beanbag chairs. And there was a really beautiful picture of first-grade teacher, Kiana Gardner, with a young black boy, a first grader, who came up to her waist. He looked thin and sweet, and she was ushering him to the corner so that he could hang out and decompress. This article was really about how children are making their way in the slow-moving pandemic era, right? And how they need more social, emotional support in school. What an extraordinary gift. But it made me wonder, what happens to those black boys and girls when they get bigger and taller and enter in the seventh, eighth, and go on to high school? Because it's then when they're most at risk for being thrust into the school-to-prison pipeline. It's how many of our young people come to us through choice. In, according to MSD's numbers, in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, about twenty-four hundred young people were referred to the Department of Juvenile Services because they were arrested in schools around the state of Maryland, nineteen of whom were in Baltimore City. I'm concerned for those young people, those ones who don't have the beanbag chairs. And this is an opportune time for you, as you head into Annapolis, to divest from school policing and reinvest in student wellness and public health programs that directly engage young people's emotional, social, and cultural needs. Thanks so much for your time and for your ongoing support to divest, decriminalize, and reform the juvenile legal system.
You, Kelly. Thanks for being here with us tonight. Next, we will hear from Lydia Watts. Lydia? Now, we will go to Keisha Goodwin.
All right. Dear members of the Baltimore City delegation, my name is Keisha Goodwin, and I'm a pre-kindergarten par educator at Johnson Square Elementary School, which serves the community of Johnson Square, Green Mount West, Oliver, Latrobe Homes, and other families who wish to attend. I am also a proud member of the Baltimore Teachers Union, and I come here this evening representing par professionals in School Related Personnel Committee. If you can remember, many of you have fond memories of some of many of you have fond memories of some of the people who worked in your schools when you were little. It is possible that you might not know that those people were par professionals or school-related personnel, which is PSRP for short. We are vital to the public education, and we make a meaningful impact every day in every way. PSRPs make an impact by making sure students and employee records maintain confidential, resolving conflicts between students and even staff, supporting students who need more academic help, being there when someone needs a hug or needs to vent or just confide in us, keeping special education students staffed and motivated to stay on track, and helping all students access their academics, providing additional assistance to students who are English language learners, helping our youngest students adjust to school with a tutoring, with a nurturing and engaging experience, and helping students and families get their needs met in the front office. Our secretaries and also other office staff are the first-line resources for families and are important guides for the entire school community. They are our timekeepers, record keepers, information sources, and so forth. And finally, we have our PSRPs who impact schools by supporting families and community schools coordinators and holding specialists. It is great that the blueprint funding through CARLWIN expands the impact of community schools with additional funding, but the CARLWIN legislation neglected to include a very important part of the school community, PSRPs. All right, well, while our teachers' salaries are increasing greatly to attract support, our most vital part of the school's salaries are actually remaining underpaid or in many cases, not even keeping up with inflation. So we would just like to know, and this is my final thought. What would the delegation do to make sure that PSRPs are included in CARLWIN?
Thank you so much for presenting to us tonight, Keisha. I am gonna go back. Leslie, I apologize. I skipped over you. This is your opportunity now. So Leslie Meek, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much. I am a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense. Maybe you see my red shirt, and you delegates, we thank you for all of the strong gun laws that you've passed in Maryland. And I'm gonna take my two minutes to talk about the Mother's Demand Action legislation priority for this upcoming session, and that is and you probably know that this is an issue in the headlines and certainly should be in our minds. You may also know that you can make a ghost gun yourself. A gun basically consists of two parts, the lower part being the frame, which contains the trigger and the magazine, and the upper part, which is the slide that sits on top of the frame. You can go online, you can buy these parts, and in about an hour, by drilling a few holes and filing a groove in the frame for the slide, you have a ghost gun. It's untraceable. It has no serial number. The kits are not even classified as firearms. So you can buy these parts that are eighty percent or less finished, and you don't have to go through any type of background check. Also, not being classified as firearms is really, really the issue. Nobody would shell out five hundred dollars or more to buy these parts without the intent of building a functional firearm. So for those that we have already decided are not allowed to own or purchase guns, building your own ghost gun is the way to go. It is far less risky than going out and stealing a gun, and it's far less hassle than using a straw purchaser to buy one for you or driving out of state to find a jurisdiction with lax gun laws. Also, the use of ghost guns is skyrocketing. Our Baltimore Police Department recovered in two thousand nineteen, just twenty-nine. I'd say let's move forward, pass legislation to classify these as hard firearms and get background checks done.
All right. Thank you, Leslie. We appreciate you. Next, we're gonna hear from Ann Seacott, and you are on next.
Thank you so much, Delegate Bridges. Thank you to everyone for hearing all of us this late at night. My name is Ann Seacott, a proud resident of the District forty-five. Also here tonight, representing the Maryland Chapter of the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Dependence. I'll add our voice to thanking you for voting to help save people's lives by decriminalizing paraphernalia. Along with the Baltimore City Behavioral Health Directorate, we look forward to an override veto, override of the veto in December. You'll see a bill in two thousand twenty-two that is also aimed at saving people's lives from overdoses, and that's to expand the existing Good Samaritan law. It's been mentioned a couple of times now. When there's an overdose, a person's life simply cannot be saved if the people they're with run and don't call nine-one-one. We need to make sure people know that calling for help to save someone's life is more valuable than another low-level drug arrest. We would love the city delegation's support of this effort. We also ask for your support for other harm reduction measures that come before you, including establishment of overdose prevention sites. It's something that, again, has been mentioned. NCADD is a member of the Bridges Coalition, working on this at the local and state levels. There will be additional opportunities for the city delegation to reduce police involvement in responding to both mental health and mental health crises and overdose situations. Baltimore City is in the forefront in this state on moving in this direction. The involvement of public health professionals and peer counselors will contribute to saving lives. You've heard about the nine-eight-eight hotline previously. There will also be proposals to increase this more effective crisis response, including Medicaid reimbursement for peer services as well as grant funding for peer-led recovery centers. Finally, the issue of housing is one that runs through almost everything being raised tonight. People cannot succeed in their recovery without affordable housing. People with criminal records cannot succeed in being, in not being incarcerated without access to housing. Children cannot succeed in schools when their families do not have stable housing. Please support efforts to raise funding, technical assistance, and other policies that create more access to more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you always for your advocacy, Ann. Next, we will hear from Free State Justice and Jeremy LaMasta.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the delegation, for staying up this late. I know it's late night, but very glad that you're here to hear us out this evening. And thank you on the behalf of the LGBTQ plus community here in Baltimore City to speak for you as the Executive Director of Free State Justice and to share with you some of our priorities that we're watching that impact lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Baltimoreans this coming session. My name is Jeremy LaMasta. My pronouns are he and they. And Free State Justice has been a Baltimore institution for almost thirty years now, formerly known as the Free State Legal Project and Quality Maryland. We continue to offer direct legal services and policy advocacy for LGBTQ plus Marylanders of lower limited income. We commend the delegation for their continued support of our priorities this past session and look forward to additional work this coming session. Specifically, I would like to acknowledge tonight Delegate McIntosh. You know, Delegate McIntosh was the first openly gay legislator in the Maryland General Assembly. She was instrumental in the fight for marriage equality and comprehensive non-discrimination policies in our state. And she definitely will be a mispresence in Annapolis. And, you know, without her, you know, a lot of our community's priorities would never have been put on the agenda. This coming session, we want to kind of continue in her legacy and ensure that we continue to make sure that all publicly funded services are accessible, equitable, and affirming. And we really need to work to expand our coverage of non-discrimination policies into other areas of the state, primarily in our education systems, in our human services, and our justice system. A specific note tonight, I would just like to highlight the Inclusive Schools Act. This aims to provide comprehensive non-discrimination protections throughout educational institutions across the state. And is with these policies that we can continue to support LGBT plus Marylanders and their families. I look forward to this coming session and collaborating with you all and love to discuss a number of our issues further. Thank you.
Jeremy, we look forward to working with you as well. Next, we will hear from Ashley Esposito.
Hello, and thank you for letting everybody testify. My name is Ashley Esposito. I'm a resident of Violetville, and I live in the fortieth district, and I'm representing and medical debt Maryland. I have this bill here, right? So I don't know if y'all can see it, but the due date is today. But it was actually sent to collections weeks ago. So, yeah, even though it's due today, like, I haven't been able to pay it. I made a forcefully made a four hundred dollar payment. And the last time that I did that, a large payment, it took five months to apply to my account. So fortunately or unfortunately for me, this has happened multiple times, so I kind of know how to navigate the system. I know not to trust my paper bill. I know not to trust my online portal. The problem isn't the medical care that I receive. It's not my charts, not my insurance. It's not the folks at the finance department who get the brunt of all, like, this feedback, even though it's not their fault, because a lot of these letters are auto-generated. The problem is that the hospitals are not operating, taking into consideration like what their patients are actually facing. There's no way to, like, give direct feedback on all these issues that we're facing. We're not believed. And the, the bill that was introduced last year put in a commission that has to, that had to investigate, like, how large this effect was. And there were people that were basically sued for sixty million dollars that shouldn't have had to pay in the first place. So sixty million dollars was taken from Marylanders for whom the hospital should have provided free care for. Like, that's a huge problem. So Marylanders who are bearing the burdens of feeding their families, juggling multiple jobs, and had the audacity to try to receive medical care. So I guess, like, the question that I have is that if this were to happen to you all, what would you need to have happen to make it right? What needs to happen as far as, like, further legislation to make these people whole? Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you for bringing that to the attention of the delegation as well. We are also joined by Ava Levine.
Yes, here. Thank you, Delegate Bridges and the rest of the delegation for making the time. Hello, everyone. My name is Ava Levine, and I'm here to ask the delegation to consider two bills that the Baltimore City-based Maryland Justice Project will be supporting this upcoming session. Both bills are sponsored by Senator Carter, who, of course, know is here from Baltimore City. And in addition to Delegate Lopez in the House, the first bill I'd like to discuss is the Primary Caretaker's Bill. The Primary Caretaker's Bill would require judges to consider whether a person who has been convicted of a nonviolent offense is a primary caretaker for either a child or elderly dependent. If the judge determines that the convicted person is a caretaker of a dependent, the judge is asked not to send the person to prison or jail, but rather to a suitable, community-based alternative that allows the caretaker to remain with their dependent. The judge can choose what that alternative is. Some examples would include financial literacy classes, substance abuse treatment, or job training, essentially anything that allows the caretaker to remain in their community with their dependent. For those caretakers located in more rural communities where such programs aren't readily accessible, home confinement is also considered an acceptable alternative to incarceration. The second bill I'd like to discuss is the Prevention of Infant Separation Act. The bill would allow incarcerated women to spend more time with their newborn babies. For those incarcerated women who are eligible for pre-release status, the bill would allow the mothers to remain with their newborns for up to one year postpartum in the new pre-release facility for women. The bill would also allow for increased visitation for the secondary caretaker of the child so as to ensure a seamless transition when the child can no longer remain with the mother. For those mothers who are not eligible for pre-release status, the bill will allow incarcerated mothers to have increased visitation with their newborn babies to facilitate bonding. I'd like to highlight the importance of both bills for Baltimore City specifically. As I'm sure many people here know, a plurality of incarcerated people in the state of Maryland come from Baltimore. Maryland spends hundreds of millions of dollars each year to incarcerate the people of this city. Nearly five hundred incarcerated people come from Sandtown Winchester alone. Both of these bills would help end some of the family separation in the city that occurs because of incarceration, which is why I believe it is especially important for the city delegation to support these bills. And thank you for your time and for all my fellow Baltimore City residents who spoke earlier about the dangers of incarceration.
Thank you, Ava, and thank you for bringing that to the delegation as well. Next, we will hear from B. Conrad.
Good evening. My name is B. Conrad, and I'm here representing North Had Mission, Red Shed Village. The Red Shed Village is a community initiative founded and led by unhoused individuals and those with lived experience that houses four people in microshelters in Baltimore City. Though I'm here to offer testimony on the importance of prioritizing homelessness, the reality is that solving this issue necessitates placing increased resources into several other areas. Homelessness is a housing problem, a public health problem, a poverty problem, and accessibility problem. As a person who's experienced homelessness myself and works every day with unhoused individuals, it is important that we understand just how close to homelessness many people are, especially in the wake of a global pandemic that has brought to light the many deficiencies in our social support systems. One misrent payment can force someone into street homelessness, and from there, existing support services needlessly overcomplicate a process that is both dehumanizing and frustrating. For people who use drugs, the dehumanizing nature of this process is only exacerbated as they attempt to navigate a system that refuses to meet them where they are. In a city with thousands of people experiencing homelessness on a given day and thousands of vacant homes, why are there so few options for people experiencing homelessness? Shelters fill up for the winter. Why are underfunded and poorly managed congregate shelters even the only option? We need increased funding and priority to housing and unhoused now by expanding our imaginations past temporary shelter and abstinence-based programs. We need to push for rapid rehousing and comprehensive public health efforts that are rooted in harm reduction and trauma-informed care, putting more money into the funding of existing inadequate and inequitable systems of care for the unhoused is only succeeding in giving lip service to the city claim that the plan to make homelessness, they plan to make homelessness rare and brief. I would also like to piggyback off of the numerous speakers who advocated for overdose prevention sites and the override of the governor's veto of SB four twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, B. We appreciate you being here. We are getting there, folks, slowly but surely. There are still a number of participants, and I'm gonna keep going through the names. Next, we have Haley Cassidy. I think Haley may not be on here, so I'm gonna quickly go to Ricky Morris. Ricky?
Surprise. My name's Cam Kerr. I'm actually not Ricky Morris. I am standing in for Ricky today. I am from Baltimore, Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. I'm also, I also live in District forty-five. Shout out. Yeah, I don't know. I just want to take a minute, like, I'm not, I'm not, like, kissing your asses, but I do want to take a minute to say, like, it is remarkable that y'all are, like, still here doing this tonight, and the fact that I'm here also. And also, like, session is so intense. Like, I'm not even y'all, and I've been to session, and the intensity of it is a lot, and I hope that you take humanity with you when you go into those spaces, like, go to the bathroom and eat your food and, like, take a nap. Like, I don't know if y'all take naps, but, like, I'm disabled. I have to. And I also really appreciate the fact that you took the time to, like, have the humanity to listen to what we had to say about SB four twenty and the paraphernalia bill, and that you've sat and listened to us for six years, bring the overdose prevention bill to, to session, and heard us out when we talk about losing our family, our friends, and our loved ones to overdose. I really appreciate that. And I really look forward to y'all overriding the veto of the bill whenever you do special session. And also hope that, you know, you support overdose prevention sites in any capacity, whenever that comes up in city or state, and also, you know, the language around the Good Samaritan bill. You know, I appreciate your humanity, and I'm just really grateful that you appreciate the humanity of people who use drugs. That's such a big issue in the city, and it's, I mean, it's not really an issue. Just the fact that people who use drugs are dehumanized is the issue. And so thank you for adding humanity to us. Thanks.
You, and thank you for your patience and for stepping in for Ricky Morris as well. So thank you for being here with us tonight. Next, we will have Devon. Devon is not here. Dante Swinton. Dante, are you on?
All right, cool. I was not anticipating going up just yet. All right. So thanks for hanging in there with us. And once again, my name is Dante Swinton with Energy Justice Network. We need the delegation's support to clarify language about the rights of local governments in Maryland to adapt local clean air laws. In two thousand nineteen, Baltimore City In 2019, Baltimore City Council unanimously adopted the Baltimore Clean Air Act, which was designed to force the cleanup or closure of two major waste incinerators in our city. The Wind Waste Trash Incinerator in downtown Baltimore in Westport and the Medical Waste Incinerator in Curtis Bay, the largest in the country. And fortunately, a federal district court judge struck down the city's law. The law actually make it quite clear that the local governments do have the power to have clean air laws. I'm gonna turn my video off. As strict or stricter than the state and federal minimums. Since the lame duck mayor dropped the city's legal appeal last year, our only hope is for legislative fix to clarify the legislature's intent. So it's super critical that we do have that piece of legislation installed, that we have that definition in, what is it, environmental code two subsection 104 that says that local municipalities can have stricter air standard than the state can, which is what it was supposed to do in the first place. Additionally, we need the delegation to unify around our call for closing the incinerator once and for all. When moving Baltimore City towards zero waste, removing trash incineration from tier one, the renewable portfolio standard, there's no need for something that's polluting the city residents and the surrounding communities with toxic mercury, lead, nitrogen oxides, formaldehyde, and like to be part of our waste system. It doesn't make any sense. And you actually create far more jobs and more economic justice in Baltimore. A dirty trash incinerator for the last.
Thank you, Dante. I think we were starting to lose you there a little bit at the end, but I think we got the gist of everything that you were you were saying.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know what you what you missed out on there.
Well, we appreciate you. You know, everything you brought to our attention and we will definitely take that into consideration. I'm sure we'll be working with you as we move forward to Indianapolis. Next up, actually, let me just make it clear that as we have been going through and saying some of these names, I may have skipped over some names, but some folks have also sent in written written testimony. And so if you heard a name and they're not here, it's probably because they sent in written testimony as well. And so next up, we will have Natasha Escobar.
Hi, everybody. All right, give me a second. All right. Good evening to the Baltimore City delegation. I'm Natasha Escobar and I'm a teacher at Baltimore City College and I'm a leadership team member of Baltimoreans for Educational Equity. B is a group of teachers, former teachers, families, students, and allies who work collectively to achieve educational equity at the district, city, and state level. Before I begin my remarks, I would like to acknowledge Delegate McIntosh's retirement and on behalf of all of the members of B, thank her for her contributions as a legislator, an educator, and a fierce advocate for our city. We hope the next chapter of her story is as bountiful, beautiful, and blissful as this one. We are also grateful for the roles each of you played in the passage of the blueprint for Maryland's future and its promise for our kids. I'm here today on behalf of our members to share what we think the Baltimore City delegation should prioritize in the upcoming General Assembly session. This year, our members have indicated a spectrum of top priorities for educational equity. They are transportation, specifically public transit in Baltimore, digital equity and broadband as a utility, supporting the Votes Coalition efforts to add several elected members to the Baltimore City School Board and supporting the work to put care before cops in our schools, taking police from our school buildings. Our major focus for us this year is the inadequate and unreliable system of public transportation that many Baltimore City students rely on in order to get to school, especially now that schools are back in person. Last year, the Fund for Educational Excellence coordinated interviews with over 350 city school students regarding their experiences with transit from their front door to the school door. If we do not address the problems that intersect and perpetuate educational equity, our students are our students are losing lost learning time, miss opportunities to participate in additional school activities and unemployment, and lack of safety measures present on public transportation. There is no reason why the system shouldn't serve the 75% of public middle and high school students who rely on public transportation. In conjunction with the student organization SOMOS, we are asking that legislators make transit an urgent priority during the next session. A continuing area of focus for our members is digital equity, specifically equitable access to high-speed, reliable, and affordable internet for students and families in Baltimore. Last session, in partnership with Delegate Learman and 60 other equity-driven organizations, we successfully advocated for the creation of the Office of Statewide Broadband. We are hoping. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation for us tonight. Also, we have, or actually next, we will have Diana Phillips.
Good to see Kristen Smith and the rest of the Baltimore City delegation. My name is Diana Phillips. I'm a proud D40 resident of the last ten years. I'm co-chair of the Autonomy Work Group, the People's Commission Decriminalize Maryland, which was established in 2019 to the purpose of reducing the disparate impact of the justice system on Marylanders who have been historically targeted and marginalized by local and state criminal justice laws based on their race, gender, disability, or socioeconomic status. This statewide commission examines Maryland's legal codes to understand the ways in which criminal laws reinforce structural racist inequality. The commission has five work groups, including youth, poverty, drugs, the unhoused, and body autonomy. Each has its own legislative agenda. For instance, the Drug Policy Work Group is seeking successful override of last session's decriminalization drug paraphernalia bill. The unhoused work group is seeking repeal the failure to obey a reasonable and lawful order law. And the youth work group shares the same concern, the state attorney Mosby, about improving the rights of juveniles when interrogated by law enforcement. The Body Autonomy Work Group of the People's Commission to Decriminalize Maryland has been engaged in policy of restored narrow approach to Maryland for the last few years on legislation to prohibit the criminalization of pregnant outcomes. The result is the Pregnant Person's Dignity Act, a bill to be introduced during the 2022 Maryland General Assembly, sponsored by Delegate Nicole.
I think we may have lost her. Sorry about that. So we will try to get you back on. If not, we will definitely make sure that we can reach out and have your written testimony submitted as well. You're breaking up pretty bad. So we'll try and make sure that we can get written testimony from you as well. Okay, so.
Submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from CMTA, Mr. Brian O'Malley.
Thanks, Delegate Bridges. First of all, thanks to the whole delegation for doing this. It's really a great idea and it's been empowering and inspiring to hear everyone testify. I also wanted to, I'm really excited to hear about the Transit Subcommittee. That puts you in a position to influence state and federal funds, which are you know, opportunities to make a huge difference in the lives of Baltimoreans. So that's a really important place to be putting your time and attention. I'd love to, for the Central Maryland Transportation Alliance to be a resource to that group, meet with you, research things, whatever we can do to help, let us know. Tonight, I want to highlight four issues and ask you to prioritize them. One is really a thank you for your support for the Transit Safety and Investment Act. It's frankly unfortunate that you had to pass a bill like that, but the continued underfunding of the basic maintenance of the transit system has us behind the eight ball, so to speak, with Baltimore is just dealing with breakdowns worse than than other systems in the country. And, you know, I don't have to tell you this, the the bill was cosponsored by Delegate Learman and Senator McCray. The delegation was behind it. We look forward to you overriding that veto during the special session. Number two, federal funding. We have the Infrastructure Bill passed. There's also a lot of funding that came in the form of the CARES Act, Chris and the American Rescue Plan to help with COVID response. Huge opportunity, but unfortunately, MDOT is quite opaque with how it uses funds. And you have an opportunity in your roles to ask for greater accountability and also to make sure that with this with this infrastructure funding that we prioritize equity and climate goals and don't just repeat the mistakes of the past decades. I'll close out by highlighting two things real quick. Mobility service has been having lots of problems. I was honored to be invited to sign on to a letter that Disability Rights Maryland put out today to the governor, but I hope you find that letter and read it when they publish it. And last thing I'll say is transit governance reform, and I know Delegate Bridges is a champion on this issue. We want to be a partner on this because we think it's really important and you have a critical role to play. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate you and will definitely be partnering with you on this upcoming session. Next, we will hear from Evan. Evan Serpik, Jews United for Justice. Hey, Evan.
Hello. Well, thank you to my 41st district delegate, 20 Bridges. Wonderful to see you and echo all of those who appreciate, signal appreciation for all the legislators here and staying to hear all of us. I really think it's, we all appreciate it. My name is Evan Serpik and I'm a member of the Baltimore Leadership Council of Jews United for Justice and co-chair of JFJ's Maryland Justice System Reform and Immigrant Rights Team. JFJ organizes 6,000 Jewish Marylanders and allies to work for social, racial, and economic justice at the state and local level. We just marked the beginning of Kislev, the Hebrew month of Hanukkah. During Hanukkah, we remember how our ancestors fought against an unjust society that privileged the powerful few over the needs of the community. Together, we have taken important steps to move Maryland forward, but too often we see reflections of the inequities that faced our ancestors. One such inequity is the lack of paid family and medical leave, which means that most people can't afford to take take time off to care for themselves or a loved one. The Time to Care Act is supported by more than 86% of Marylanders. This is the year to pass paid family and medical leave in Maryland. Last year, you supported Access to Council for Renters Facing Eviction, and now we need your support to fund the program to ensure rental assistance actually keeps people housed. We and our partners at Renters United Maryland urge you to require landlords apply for emergency rental assistance before filing for eviction and require judges to stay evictions when there was a pending application for rental assistance. We also appreciated that you voted for the Driver Privacy Act and DDoD not detention. And now we need your vote to override Governor Hogan's vetoes. We're joining CASA in supporting universal representation for Maryland immigrants who are detained. No one should be ripped away from their families because they lack legal counsel. Police violence and abuse continues to ravage Black and Brown communities, and we thank you for the role the delegation played in passing historic reforms last year. As part of implementing those reforms, the role of Baltimore City Civilian Review Board needs to be clarified. Together with our partners in the Maryland Coalition for Justice and Police Accountability, we're supporting counselors, not cops legislation to prioritize school-based mental health services and restorative justice over armed police officers in schools. Maryland has the highest rate of incarcerated Black residents in the nation. We appreciate the steps you've taken to address this inequity by taking the governor out of the parole process and creating a women's pre-release facility. Just one last sentence, we need your support to override the governor's veto of parole reform, provide funding for the pre-release facility, and pass the Juvenile Interrogation Protection Act to ensure kids are not questioned by police without a lawyer. Thanks so much, everybody. Good night.
You, Evan, and thank always for your advocacy. Next, we will hear from Stephen Lee. I may have said that wrong.
Thank you so much, Delegate Bridges. My name is Stephen Leas from Sunrise Movement Baltimore and Sunrise Movement Maryland. I'm here to urge the Baltimore delegation to take sweeping action on the climate crisis. I speak with youth in Baltimore about climate often. We are terrified about our future. The scientific consensus is clear that without rapid action, we will experience endless crises and globally, millions will die, at least. Decades of fossil fuel dependence and disinformation campaigns about climate are leaving with, leaving us with an unlivable future, and we are angry. The city must rapidly reduce carbon emissions and fund alternatives to polluters. Even with the Democratic supermajority, Maryland legislators made little progress on climate. Maryland is the wealthiest state and the wealthiest country in the world. If Maryland fails on climate, the world fails. The Baltimore City delegation, we urge them to take a stand and enact statewide Green New Deal policies that cut emissions, create green jobs, and prioritize benefits for the most impacted residents, those who are left out of the original New Deal. Legislators must reform the renewable energy subsidies, knows the RPS, to stop subsidizing false solutions like trash incineration and biogas methane and instead fund zero waste initiatives and real renewables like solar and wind. We need an environmental human rights amendment to enshrine our right to clean air and water. Toxic PFAS known as forever chemicals must be banned. We need the Climate Solutions Now Act to ensure that Maryland reduces greenhouse gas emissions by at least 60% while ensuring that environmental justice, justice communities and unions are at the table. Emissions from transit and building sectors must be addressed equitably. Schools and universities must be decarbonized. Legislators should consider the Future Act. We urge Baltimore legislators to look at climate through a social justice lens, which is the basis of a Green New Deal. In that sense, eviction protections for renters are part of a green economy. Transit equity through the Transit Equity and Assurances Act is part of a green economy. Ending medical debt is part of the green economy. Legalizing cannabis, decriminalizing psychoactive substances and paraphernalia is part of a green economy. Passing counselors, not cops, to end the school-to-prison pipeline is part of the green economy. Immigrant justice is part of a Green New Deal, a green economy. And Green New Deal policies will create the world that young people in our state deserve to live in. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and thank you for sticking with us tonight, Stephen. We appreciate you. Next, we will hear from Monica Mananzin, and I may have said that wrong, Monica, so please correct me.
You actually said it correctly, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Monica Mananzin. I'm an attorney at the Care Coalition and have been a resident of Baltimore City for six years. I'm here to make the case for providing access to counsel to the most vulnerable immigrant members of the Baltimore City community through the Maryland Universal Representation Bill. Will their ever-present threat of aggressive immigration enforcement have significant physical, emotional, developmental, and economic repercussions for Baltimore City residents? Families stripped away from their loved ones means forced displacement. It means having to leave their community and support system behind and transferring to a different school or having to give up schooling altogether for most children. For many, detention and deportation means parents not being able to see their children grow up and children growing up without mothers or fathers or their siblings. Legal representation dramatically increases the chance that an individual achieves a successful outcome in their immigration case. When detained immigrants are represented, they are 10.5 times more likely to succeed in their legal cases. For the past four years, NIMA and their leadership have been instrumental in ensuring that Baltimore City is at the forefront of universal representation initiatives by working with nonprofit organizations like Mind Care Coalition, which offer free legal representation to detain Baltimore City residents. In the past fiscal year alone and at the height of the COVID-19 pandemic, our universal representation program in partnership with NIMA have an 87% bond success rate and was able to obtain a protection-based relief for every client it represented. Providing free legal representation can make the greatest impact, especially in detained cases, so I urge all of you to support the Universal Representation Bill as it is critical to keeping Baltimore City families together. Thank you for giving me the space to speak before you. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Monica. We appreciate you and the work of the Care Coalition. So thanks for being with us this evening. Next, we will hear from Cynthia Sanchez. And I think Gabby, you are gonna translate for Cynthia for us?
Yes, and Cynthia will read her, read her testimony first, all in Spanish, and then I will do it in English. Muchas gracias, Cynthia, por estar aquí. Ya puedes testificar.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Cynthia Sanchez. Desde hace 12 años vivo en la ciudad de Baltimore y pagando impuestos todos los años. Baltimore se ha convertido en una casa para mi familia. Con la pandemia del coronavirus ha sido muy difícil para mi familia. Primero porque perdimos nuestros trabajos. La salud de mi esposo empeoró por el estrés del COVID. Estos años, 2020, y este año ha sido tan terrible en todos los aspectos para nosotros. Sin embargo, gracias a la ayuda que he recibido de casa, me he sentido apoyada y sé que cuento con el respaldo de ellos. Mi esposo tiene una enfermedad crónica que es epilepsia. Si tuviéramos acceso a un seguro médico, nuestra vida fuera muy diferente. Mi esposo toma 11 pastillas diarias, pastillas que, medicamentos que tengo que comprar cada mes. Son tres recetas que cuestan más de 100 dólares cada uno. Mi esposo ha perdido muchas oportunidades de empleo debido a su situación de salud. Por la falta de trabajo y de dinero muchas veces tenemos que decidir entre la salud de mi esposo y mantener un techo seguro para nuestros hijos. Es muy doloroso encontrarnos en esta situación porque mi esposo necesita estas 11 pastillas para poder mantener los ataques epilépticos controlados. Porque si él no toma este medicamento, es muy difícil estabilizarlo. Como no tenemos seguro, es muy difícil tener una cita con el neurólogo y cuando le hemos tenido es porque mi esposo está en una situación muy crítica. Más allá de la enfermedad de él, mi esposo fue fuertemente atacado en el 2020 por delincuentes. Él tuvo que ser operado de un ojo y aún tiene secuelas de los golpes recibidos. Si alguien en mi familia se enferma, tenemos que recurrir a medicina natural. No podemos cubrir el gasto de un hospital. Si alguien en mi familia se enferma, tenemos que recurrir a medicina natural. No podemos cubrir los gastos de un hospital y no podemos ir a nuestro, ir al hospital es nuestra última opción. Ser undocumentedo en este país es extremadamente difícil. Nosotros solo queremos poder tener salud para poder trabajar y asegurarnos de poder mantener a nuestros niños. Trabajamos duro día a día en los, pero los gastos médicos son demasiado altos. Un seguro médico nos dará la oportunidad de no tener que elegir entre la salud de mi esposo y la comida de mis hijos. Lamentablemente, nosotros no somos la única familia que está pasando por este tipo de situación. Por favor, les pido que piensen en nosotros y que hagan lo posible por ayudarnos. No pedimos más que dignidad y salud. Gracias.
Muchas gracias Cynthia. Hello, good evening, delegation. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Cynthia Sanchez. I am a CASA member and live in Patterson Park. I've lived in Baltimore City for the last 12 years and I consider it my home. My husband and I pay taxes every year. The coronavirus pandemic has been very difficult for me and my family. First, we lost our jobs and my husband's health worsened due to stress during the pandemic. The last two years have been terrible in all aspects. However, thanks to the support that I've received from CASA, I have felt supported and I know that I'm going to continue to count on them for their ongoing support. My husband has epilepsy and we have had access. And having access to health insurance would change our life. My husband takes more than 11 medications a day. I have to buy each of his medications out of pocket and the drugs cost more than $100. My husband has lost many job opportunities due to his health condition. Every month, we have to decide between my husband's health or keeping a roof over our children's heads. Not having access to a doctor destabilizes my husband's health and restabilizing his condition is difficult. It's challenging to see a doctor since we don't have insurance. The only time we're able to set up an appointment is when my husband's condition is critical. Beyond this medical condition, my husband was heavily attacked in 2020. He had to undergo surgery on one of his eyes and has not been able to fully recover. If someone in my family gets sick, we have to self-medicate and use natural remedies. Hospital bills are way too expensive and which, and which is why it is always our last resort. Being undocumented in this country is extremely difficult. We just want to be healthy so we can work and make sure we can support our children. We work hard every day, but the medical expenses are too high. Health insurance will give us the opportunity to not have to choose between meals for my two children or my husband's medication. Unfortunately, we are not the only family that is going through this type of situation. We are doing our part. We're supporting the social and economic growth of the city that we call home. Now we ask that you think of us and what you can do to help us. We ask for nothing but dignity and health. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Thank you to Cynthia and to you Gabriela for the translation. We definitely appreciate the opportunity to hear from Cynthia and the presentation tonight. So thank you both. We we are now down to the last person, folks. So we have one more person that's signed up to speak and that person is Mansarat Ortega.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so good evening. Thank you for your time today. My name is Mansarat Ortega. I'm 19 years old and I'm a student at BCCC. I live in Fallstaff. I am a CASA member and I am here today because I want to ask for your support on a right to counsel for immigrants facing deportation. There are so many people in my country who don't have the tools to fight for their case or to know and apply for the relief that they need. How can there be real justice when people don't have lawyers to defend them? My family is from Mexico and my parents are undocumented. We are a family of eight. On total, we are six siblings. And, and I speak, and this is what I, what I'm trying to speak about because I see, I just imagine one day that if one of my parents got deported or they can't fight for their case. Right now, I'm not working and I'm the older sister, so if something ever happens to them, so we are, we are, we are six children who depend on them. So, so I feel like it's a hard case for us because like, it's not just us. There's a lot of families, ethnic families who are under need of a legal, of a lawyer in those kind of cases. This bill was introduced last year and did not pass. Families facing deportation can't wait for another year before they have legal representations. Please make this bill a priority this year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mansarat. We appreciate your time as well. And I believe that is the last person that we actually had signed up to speak. And if that is the case, someone will let me know if it's not. But if that's the case, before I turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, let me just thank the delegation for staying here and hearing everyone out, and especially those of you who spoke here tonight. You know, we obviously stayed here because what you say is very important to us as a delegation. We definitely want to hear from you. We appreciate your advocacy. We appreciate your work. We appreciate just hearing from our constituents before we go back to Annapolis and throughout the year because what is important to you is important to us. And so before we go back and work on any legislation, work on any policies, it's always important that the community comes first. And so we heard from the community tonight loud and clear, and we will take those comments and your testimony to heart before we go back to Annapolis. And so with that, I will turn it back over to you, Madam Chair, to close us out.
Thank you, Delegate Bridges. I just want to acknowledge Gabby. I'm, I think she just messaged that she had signed up independently, so I'd like to give you opportunity for your own, you know, your own testimony, and then I'll close out after you. Thank you so much.
My apologies, Gabby.
No problem. You said that the person would let you know if they got skipped over. Gabby was truthful. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys so much. I really appreciate your dedication to staying on and listening to us and listening to the issues that are important to us. My name is Gabriela Roque. I'm here representing CASA, the largest immigrant advocacy organization in the region. I want to start by thanking the entire delegation for your support and leadership in support of CASA members and immigrants across the street. In such an extraordinary way, last session, our top priority for the December special session will be around addressing the unfinished business of last session, overriding Governor Hogan's vetoes of the Dignity Not Detention Act, sponsored by members of this delegation, Delegate Stewart and Senator Smith, thank you so much, and the Maryland Driver Privacy Act. I want to remind the delegation that some of the most incredible cases of individuals impacted by these policies were residents of Baltimore City, like the most well-known case of Nora Getta, who was, who called police when her car was stolen and instead was put into ICE proceedings. The ultimate, her children still live here in Baltimore City, now without their mother. And as other, our other youth have mentioned, this issue is about protecting families and the state doing everything it can to protect against family separation. For the 2022 session in January, CASA is asking the delegation for your support and leadership on two bills that I want to thank my members for staying on and speaking to and sharing their experiences towards universal representation, a right to counsel for detained immigrants facing deportation. It was introduced last year and we need your help to ensure justice and a fair chance in court for immigrant families and immigration proceedings, and also healthcare for immigrant families. The delegation, especially in the last two years, has become unfortunately familiar with the life-death situations that undocumented immigrants face without access to healthcare. While Montgomery cares for, while Montgomery cares has been in great support to CASA members, being ineligible for Medicaid and Affordable Care Act has left thousands without coverage. This year, we'll be fighting to remove immigration status as a barrier to care. Your leadership on these bills will be critical and I sincerely thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We're glad that we had an opportunity to hear it. And I just want to just say a special thank you to our leadership team. Thank you to First Vice Chair Delegate Bridges, as well as Second Vice Chair Delegate Regina T. Boys, because, you know, it takes, you know, it takes a team to do the work of legislating, of working not only with each other, but working with other state leaders who maybe don't fully understand the greatness of Baltimore, who maybe don't fully understand that just as Baltimore has very specific, unique challenges, it also has very specific and unique virtues and assets that are not found in other parts of the state. So it's really an honor for all of us to advocate on behalf of our constituents, but we are unable to do that soundly. Okay, you know, he was like chilling until now, right? We, you know, we are not able to do that soundly without many of the advocates that participated this evening and your, your networks, because we come in with certain things we know a lot about, but then sometimes we're working on issues that maybe we have a passing familiarity with. So we do see everyone on this Zoom as well as the organizations you represent as our colleagues, as our partners. And, you know, this is going to be an interesting special session. This will be an interesting final session of our terms. But at every step, it's important for us to have an ability to express where we are individually and also where we are as a delegation. So thank you to all of you because you also could be doing something else with your evening, but you're choosing to advocate on behalf of your neighbors, your friends, and your family. And that is something that we do not take lightly. And, you know, with that, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. And I think it's, I think we can add another special thank you to Delegate Maggie McIntosh. We know there's been things all sprinkled throughout and we'll make sure she sees, you know, the wonderful remarks that have been shared. But, you know, 30 years of dedicating your, not just public life, but personal life to, you know, to public service is not a small thing. And as some of the witnesses testified, she was also experiencing an opportunity to share part of herself and the fullness of what her representation meant to not only the great people of the 43rd District, but people across Maryland, across the country, who perhaps never pondered that they could see a representative that shared their personal story. And that's not a small thing. Representation does matter. But as I have said elsewhere, she's not just a representative of the possibilities of a more inclusive, you know, republic. She's also someone who works with others well because her eye is on the goal of advancing the opportunities for Baltimoreans and those across the state. So we cannot say enough how much we cherish the opportunity to work with her for one, work with her for one more session. But we all have to, to grow and evolve quickly so that we can even think to fulfill some of the contributions she's made to our great city. So thank you, thank you, thank you to everyone and have a great evening. Take care and be safe.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Why is there?
Get boosted if you can. Get boosted.
Boost, boost. Boost, boost.